We're joined at the hip again for the fires and it was extremely, extremely smooth. So, you know, working with the county, the city of Los Angeles, we're light years ahead of the rest of the nation with respect to emergency preparedness. We do a very good job at what we do. Can we do better? Absolutely, absolutely. Like you said, it's a continually evolution. We try to take, we stay abreast of the most current changes. We work very closely together, not only the city family, but also regionally, with not only the county, but beyond the county. On some of the other boards I'm on with respect to service transportation, it not only includes LA County, Orange County, Ventura, Riverside, a number of counties where we are joined at the hip to make things better in the world of emergency preparedness.
It's not just the county, it's broader, it's the entire region?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And one more thing, I think it's important for people to understand is, this is a perfect example of what you have to prepare for, is if you have a disaster, say in the San Fernando Valley, it doesn't mean that the world is not going to provide another disaster that same day or the next day or the next week on the other side of town, or the underside of the, the other side of the county, right? So you have to prepare for the fact that sometimes our resources could be stretched thin and we have to be prepared for what's given to us. It's not like, okay, we got one disaster going on, the world is going to wait, the universe is going to wait for us to finish that before something else presents ourself. So you have to be ready for a multiple of issues, even if they happen all at the same time or in conjunction.
You have to be very flexible. One of the things that we've done within the Los Angeles Police Department is we have what we call four incident management teams. Of those individuals that are, have the skill sets to go out and assist the incident commanders with appropriately running the incident, whether it's a national disaster, whether it's a demonstration or a march, we plug that in. Not that we're taking it away from the incident commander, but they're there to assist to make sure that things run appropriately. So that's just another, another thing that we're doing here within, within the organization.
Well, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for your service and also I think it's a compliment to you to be chosen for this responsibility and it has to do with your commitment and, and the abilities that you demonstrated and the knowledge that you have. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, that will close our questions and we have the nomination before us, so let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Welcome aboard. Thank you very much and congratulations Commissioner.
Items 15 and 16 were also commission appointments. Michael Jones and Teresa Acosta both being considered to serve on the Quality and Productivity Commission. District 14 Councilmember Jose Wezar introduces the nominees and asks them to briefly describe their backgrounds.
Colleagues, what we have before us are two well-qualified individuals. One of them, Mr. Michael Jones, recommended by the Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, Bernard Parks, and Ms. Teresa Acosta, recommended by myself as Chair of the Quality Government Efficiency Committee. And they are being recommended to the Quality Productivity Commission. Welcome. You have some tremendous professional careers in terms of relying to the purpose of this commission and both of you are also very active in your communities. We also appreciate that. And if you could just both talk a little bit about your professional backgrounds and what you hope to achieve or contribute to this commission. Ladies first.
Okay. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Teresa Acosta. I grew up in City 14 and at a certain point we moved to Pasadena where I eventually graduated high school and went to USC and studied political science. After a while, I fell into working for a California State Senator, Jack Scott, and I worked for him for seven years in Pasadena and six other cities. I decided after a while that I wanted to go back and get a master's degree and I got that in business. So in 2007, I completed my MBA. Throughout the entire time, I have been involved in my community. I've sat on various boards of nonprofits and I now work for the League of California Cities and I continue to be very involved in nonprofits.
Thank you very much. And again, colleagues, this is an individual who works for the California League of Cities. She is a liaison, I believe, to this council, so just newly appointed?
No, actually, not, not in the city of Los Angeles.
Okay, not in the city of Los Angeles. So it's someone we should get to know as someone who works in the California League of Cities, for those of us who want to get more involved. And Mr. Zine and others are very involved in that, as Mr. Gardenas. So, well, thank you, Mr. Acosta. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Commissioner, or Councilmember Wezar. My name is Michael Jones and I'm proud to be here. This is a great opportunity. My background, I started with, in high school with Dorsey High School here in Los Angeles. Left Dorsey, went up to Oregon, to Pacific University, and then after that, took on a career in pharmaceutical sales. And so overall, I have about 40 years of both nonprofit and for-profit management. And I try to take all of that, to use it in the various venues that I can do in my community. I serve as a president and CEO of the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce and we're trying to do some very positive things here in the city. One of the things I'd like to add, I try and, and live my life by basically two principles that I learned a long time ago. One was from my pastor, and that is, either you're part of the problem or part of the solution. And so I really want to give of myself, my time, my effort to, to really help out, roll up my sleeves and then do what I can to help. Secondly, it comes from my grandfather, and this really has a lot to do with the Quality and Productivity Commission. My grandfather said, "Make what you want out of what you got." While grammatically, that's not the best thing to probably say, it makes a lot of sense. It makes sense because when you look at the plethora of, of city employees and agencies and you get them all working together for positive things, to do a lot more with a lot less, it can really be a positive thing. So I want to be here to help with providing viable solution to complex problems.
Great. Well, thank you very much and thank you for your willingness to serve the city of Los Angeles, especially at this time with the budget constraints that we're facing, the economy that we're facing. It's the right time for us to work with your commission to come up with some solutions for the city to be more efficient and find those areas where we could have more savings. Every year, the commission has an annual awards where they recognize a department or a department head that has created an innovative program that finds those efficiencies and we look forward to trying to replicate some of those in some other areas of the city as well and we look forward to working with you as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Asking about his experience working with other cities, District 8 Councilmember Bernard Parks offers Mr. Jones his thanks.
I'd just like to thank Michael for staying with us. When Michael was here last time, when this was continued, we had the earthquake and he left the building quite rapidly and upon reflection, decided to come back. But we wanted to thank him. Michael's done a great job in the Crenshaw Chamber, but also I think one of his legacies will always be the work he's done at the Crenshaw YMCA where he served a number of years. And I think what's important for this commission is that he brings experience from three or four different cities. He's spent time in Oregon, Los Angeles, also believe in Kansas, that he's developed an expertise in both for-profit and nonprofit, which would be very beneficial to this commission. And we're looking forward to a great deal of increased improvement and particularly in this day and age with the economic situation. And so I just wanted to welcome him, thank him for putting himself forward and look forward to working with him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, and that is the last speaker on our queue. Thank you again, Mr. Jones, for putting yourself forward and, Mr. Acosta, for the pleasure of working with, when you were with Senator Scott's office, we thank you as well. And with that, let's take a vote and make this official. So let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you both very much. Congratulations, a round of applause for our new commissioners.
Thank you.
Wednesday's item 37 filed the council considering a planning and land use committee report that would make zoning changes in the northeast Los Angeles community plan.
This is a very, very important ordinance, but thank Councilmember Wezar. Together, we've been working on this for several years. This started quite some time ago and it's been a subject of many, many meetings. So I wanted to ask the staff to first talk about the outreach, well, first talk about the objective of the ordinance and then the outreach. And I'd like to ask Assistant Chief Frye, if he can start off with the public safety element of this and your perspective and perhaps share with my colleagues why this is so significant. If you could hold my time, please.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come and talk about this, Councilman Reyes. Councilmembers, my name is Assistant Chief Craig Frye, I'm the acting fire marshal for the city of Los Angeles. This is a project that we've been working with, with the planning department, building and safety, and as well as the council offices. This is a very important issue for me on, on two bases. One is the fire officer, one that has been involved with some recent incidents where we now have the ability to impact the community prior to a catastrophic emergency occurring, which, which we saw in the Silmar district the other day, Sepulveda Pass area. This is one where we can now address the needs for ingress and egress for our residents, one where we can address the water needs for the communities that we serve, and one that we can address the type of materials that we allow to go in there in building in regards to the fire resistiveness. And one of the most important things, what type of vegetation we, we allow to go in those areas. This is something we've worked very hard with. We're very thankful that we've had the opportunity as a fire department to come in early in the stage so we can have an impact, a positive impact to prevent a catastrophic incident. The second part is, I grew up in this area. I have family that lives in this area and I see the importance of this for the area that I grew up in and that I lived in. So I appreciate it and if there's any questions that I can bring in, then I'll let the planning department take it from there.
Yes, thank Assistant Chief and colleagues, when I introduced this motion, it was back in 2004. At that time, we had focused on the District 1 areas, the hillside areas in northeast, Paradise Hill, parts of Montecito Heights, and from there it expanded then. Councilmember Villarosa wanted to expand it to the other hills surrounding northeast. So we ransomed into Alserino and other parts of northeast. And with that, we've been meeting for the past four years with the community and I'd like to ask the planning department, if they'd like to give us a summary of the nature of the work and the degree of outreach that occurred at this time.
Gabriela Juarez, Planning Department. Good morning, council. In trying to move this project forward, we've done a number of outreach methods, including focus groups and small group meetings over the last two years, something over 35 of those in this particular area. In addition to that, we've done several workshops and information sessions. We've met with neighborhood councils throughout this area as well as their subcommittees for land use. We've also extended our outreach to be translated into five different languages and available on our website. And we've also had translators available at all of our meetings. We've used different types of media in order to help portray the different issues and concerns that have been shared with us throughout this process. And we've made it an iterative process in that, at every stage of this process, we've taken input in order to continue to refine the regulations and make them exactly what the community would like to see.
This is a great thing for northeast Los Angeles, according to District 14 Councilmember Jose Wezar, who described some of the meetings that were held over the four-year period.
It's a long time coming, but I think it's a great day for northeast Los Angeles, for the hillsides of northeast Los Angeles. I want to thank the planning department for all the work you've put into this, attending many meetings, a number of meetings, I would hear of a meeting at least once every two weeks or, and I'd say another one, but certainly we did our outreach. Many of those meetings were contentious. Many of those meetings, people brought out misinformation that were scare tactics, that were hoping to scare people away from supporting a good policy. And once people understood what this was attempting to accomplish, many people actually did come on board. So thank you very much and certainly I thank you, Chief, for your support. And I know when we've talked about this, you mentioned your personal attachment to the area and that certainly resonated with a lot of folks, knowing that a person of your stature understands the good in this policy. But this is a great thing. When I came on board three years ago and the ICO had been proposed and I heard about what it was going to accomplish, working with Ed Reyes and his staff and the planning department, we immediately wanted to make sure that we actually put the ICO into an ordinance. And what we have before us today will provide us with a way to ensure that we have additional safety. Many of these roads that lead up to the hillsides are small roads and sometimes our emergency vehicles cannot access those areas, so it will control density. It will also provide for some aesthetics, improvements in aesthetics as we look out to these hillsides today. Without these measures, you have different types of buildings, of different construction, of different sizes, that does not make for the pleasant hillsides that you see if, that from many of these areas. It will also provide for a way for our hillsides to make safe, to be safer, so that we don't have mudslides and other events, natural events that have caused injury and possibly death to many of our residents. So this is a great ordinance, a long time coming. I want to thank you all for the work you've done. I want to thank my staff who, who work hard on this, who put up with repelling a lot of the misinformation that was put out there. I actually got called once and was asked by a Spanish-language television that, "What are we doing taking away old women's property?" But that's the type of misinformation that was put out there. But at the end of the day, it's good for northeast Los Angeles and this is a long time coming. And finally, I want to add that I introduce an amending ordinance that will address some litigation that is happening at Elephant Hill, an area that if, in fact, the outcome of that case goes one way or another, these rules will apply to that area to ensure that those areas stay consistent with the development of the rest of northeast Los Angeles. And when many of the high school students who came to Plum, many of them were asking, "Why is it that in our area, we don't have the same types of beautiful landscaping, beautiful view sheds that many other communities have?" Well, that is, if we don't control the type of growth we have, but still allow the growth, we will have the type of results we've had for many years in some of these hillsides. So thank you all for your hard work and this is a day we will all be celebrating in northeast Los Angeles. Thank you.
There's no further speakers in the queue, so Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
All right, we'll go back in order, our next item.
You can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM and on Sunday at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending November 28th, 2008. On behalf of Camilla Chilcott and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pulpjoy, thanking you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
El estar preparado en caso de emergencia es responsabilidad de todos. Sin embargo, para las personas con discapacidad es especialmente crítico que tomen los pasos necesarios para asegurar su supervivencia. En Los Ángeles aproximadamente 1.2 millones de individuos tienen algún tipo de discapacidad. Puede que sea usted, un pariente, un vecino o un compañero de trabajo. Hay tres pasos importantes al prepararse para una emergencia. Primer paso, tener un kit de suministros de emergencia en casa, en trabajo y en el auto. Si tiene niños, asegúrese de que su escuela tenga un kit de suministros para ayudar a su niño en caso de una emergencia. Paso número dos, cree un plan de emergencia familiar y practique, practique y practique. Asegúrese de incluir a todos los miembros de la familia y contactos fuera del estado en todos los ensayos, además de preguntar sobre el plan de emergencia de la escuela de su hijo o hija. Y el paso número tres, entérese y manténgase informado sobre los diferentes tipos de emergencias que pueden ocurrir en su área. Debe asegurarse de poder sobrevivir por un mínimo de tres días con agua, alimentos y cualquier medicamento o equipo necesario que utilice para su discapacidad. Su kit de suministros de emergencia debe incluir copias de documentos importantes como tarjetas de seguro médico, recetas para medicamentos o anteojos, instrucciones sobre cómo operar su equipo específico, licencia de conducir, documentos financieros y fotos. Para su mascota o animal de servicio, asegúrese de incluir alimento extra, agua, golosinas, medicamentos, botiquín de primeros auxilios, collarina adicional con placa de identificación y un arnés o correa extra. Solo usted sabe qué lo puede preparar y ayudar tanto a usted como a su familia en caso de un desastre. ¿Está usted preparado? Para mayor información, por favor comuníquese con el Departamento de Discapacidad o el Departamento de Administración de Emergencias del Ayuntamiento de Los Ángeles, al llamar a los números en pantalla o al marcar el 311.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Your city, your channel.
It's Wednesday, December the 3rd, and we are working...
Very good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for December 3rd, 2008. We're here in the John Ferraro Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Welcome to our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live throughout the city's cable system and rebroadcast us each evening. Welcome our members of the public that are here in council chambers as well. I want to thank those council members who are here on time pursuant to our own council rules. That's Councilmembers Cardenis, Gruel, Labange, Perry, Reyes, Smith, and Zine. We still are awaiting other council members who are now late for quorum. Those are Councilmembers Alarcon, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Rosendahl, and Councilmember Wesson. Mr. Weiss's excuse to arrive a little bit later this morning. If you do not have a television close at hand, you can always watch us through the Internet at la-city.org, which broadcasts us live also through the web. And you can log on and see our archived footage of any past council meetings. We also have on the web our agendas, which are made available 72 hours in advance, or here in person in council chambers, or in our city clerk's office. Those agendas have items which are categorized into items that have had public hearings and those that have not. Those that have not, if you would like to be heard, a card from the public automatically triggers a hearing. And so if you'd like to fill out a card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants at arms, we'd be very happy to hear your testimony today. We also have general public comment, which is for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under the city's jurisdiction. And you can fill out a speaker card and hand that to one of the sergeants, and we'll be sure to include that as well. Finally, you can always use your telephone to listen in to council meetings in our attempts to make it as easy as possible to watch our city government in action. And that number is 213-621-CITY, service known as Council Phone at 213-621-CITY. We are now at nine members. We're still awaiting Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Wesson. As soon as we have one more member, we will begin the meeting. And thank you again, everybody, for your patience, and we will begin shortly. This is a last quorum call for Councilmembers Alarcon, Hahn, Parks, Rosendahl, and Wesson. If we do not get one of those council members shortly, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. If the sergeants at arms can please assist us. Councilmembers Alarcon, Hahn, Parks, Rosendahl, and Wesson are now about 20 minutes late. If they will make their way down immediately. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenis, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenis moves, and Ms. Perry seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. We can run through the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 2, and the recommendation for council action is to grant the application.
All righty. Is there a motion to do so? That is in which council district?
Council District 2.
Okay, Ms. Gruel moves, and we'll go ahead and open the roll on item one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next items, please.
To go forthwith, please.
Yeah, forthwith without objection, please. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through nine.
Okay. Any specials two through nine, colleagues? Yes, Ms. Perry.
Can you hold item six for an amending motion?
Sure. Item six, we will hold. Any other specials? Let's hold two and three, and we'll link that together with 18 when that comes about. There's no other specials. Oh, yeah, Mr. Cardenis? Item four for Mr. Cardenis. That leaves five and seven through nine. If there are no requests to call those special, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 10 through 22. Ten votes are required for consideration. There are ordinances 10 through 15. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the ordinances on the desk. So we have 12 members. Again, Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Wesson are late. If they will please make their way here right away so we can take up those ordinances. And we have cards, I believe, on 15, 18, and 19. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other specials? Yes, Ms. Gruel.
Seventeen F to go forthwith for Ms. Hahn.
Okay. Any specials? Mr. Smith?
Seven forthwith.
Seven forthwith without objection as well. If there are no other specials, we'll hold those ordinances and open and close the remaining public hearings. On number 16, we'll move to approve that. And if we can please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. If we can send seventeen forthwith, please. Next items.
Next items are the closed session, items 23 through 29. And I believe there's a request on item number 24.
Okay. What is the request?
City Attorney's Office is requesting that matter be referred back to Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay. Is there any objection to referring 24 back to Budget and Finance? Seeing none, go ahead and do that. We'll hold the others on the table for our closed session if we can continue on to the continuation agenda.
Next item, item number 30, is an item for which public hearing has been held, and there are two reports on the file on that item.
Okay. Mr. Cardenis, we'll call that special. We can move to the next item, please.
Next item is item 31, and that is also an ordinance that has been submitted. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk for Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Hahn when they arrive. Go ahead, please.
That would take council back to the public comment.
Okay, we'll go to general public comment now. General public comment is two minutes per speaker, and it's on items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the City Council. We have a clock to help you guide your time there, and our first speaker is Sky Anderson. Good morning, Mr. Anderson.
I'm Sky Anderson, a resident of Los Angeles and a community activist. In case you think I only come up here and talk about negative things, I dig, admire Mr. Garcetti. I came here seven, eight years ago, nine years ago, and Hollywood was a slum, and now it's a beautiful, thriving community under his guidance. But first, I want to talk about Mayor Villagosa. Mayor Villagosa ran against Jim Hahn and depicted him as a person who was unethical, a pay-to-play. I don't know anybody who's more ethical than Mr. Hahn. He sacrificed his position so he could help Los Angeles become a better city. My conclusion to this is Mr. Villagosa cannot be trusted. He divorced a beautiful wife who raised his children so he could have an affair with a model image reporter. Recently, I talked to a young girl who works for Mr. Villagosa, and I said, "There are homeless children need help." Would you tell Mr. Villagosa that he needs to talk to a charity about starting a charity to help homeless children? These kids are dying on the streets. She said she would. I called her back, and she said, "Oh, I don't talk to Mr. Villagosa. I talk to an aide of his." I would have lied to. About two weeks ago, I would have lied to by Representative Mr. Villagosa. Our country is in a deep corruption epoch. Drugs are killing our society, but no one wants to talk about it. Corruption at the highest levels of financial institutions. I've been lied to recently by the Bank of America. The Bank of America, I've been accustomed to them for 19 years, and I've been lied to recently. It costs me a lot of money. Can't be trusted. Our country doesn't have 50 years if it's going the way it is. There's a wise man that says civilizations come and go. Rome was filled with nomads. That's homeless. Our country's in deep financial trouble, deep ethical trouble, and we're not going to be here 50 years from now if we continue the way we are. We're over with.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys, City Hall, Sean Murphy. After that, we'll come back to council chambers, Daniel Wright. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Council members, I hope you enjoyed your Thanksgiving holiday. I just want to take the time out to thank you for hosting the Christmas Hollywood Santa Parade. I went out there, and I enjoyed myself. Mr. Sky Anderson is right about Antonio. He... Antonio needs to lower the bus. He needs to stop the fare increase next year from going up. If he would do that, I would reelect him, but otherwise, no. Walter Moore, there's another candidate besides Zuma Dog. Walter Moore is running for mayor, and Wendy Gru is running for city comptroller. I'm going to vote for Walter Moore. I don't think Zuma Dog's going to make it. He's... I don't think he can do the job. So Walter, if you want change, go to waltermoreformare.com.
Thank you very much, and glad you enjoyed the Santa Parade. Daniel Wright is our next speaker. Oscar Johnson will follow.
Good morning, Council. Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard of the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition. I'm here today to discuss the Autry Museum in Griffith Park and an elephant other than Billy. That elephant is the proposal to massively expand the Autry Museum on precious parkland so that the Autry Board of Directors can move the collections and exhibition spaces of the Southwest Museum from private land already owned by the Autry. Autry's own team of experts issued a 227-page report establishing that the iconic Southwest Museum was both physically and economically feasible for continued museum use. Yet, the Autry management is trying to misrepresent to this council that the Southwest must be moved. It's a big lie. It's an elephant-sized lie. The debate over the elephant exhibit today highlights an important fact. You, the City Council, hold Griffith Park in trust for the people of Los Angeles. Your trustee duties are more extensive than your duties when you consider private developer land use entitlements. The Autry's proposal asks this council to dedicate our land, the people's land in Griffith Park, to support an offensive and completely unnecessary cannibalization of the Southwest Museum to only enhance the stature of this Autry Museum. Autry paid $0 to merge with the Southwest Museum and instead has been raising money only for their expansion. Autry's 2006 audit financials are now available, and they show that Autry has only $20 million cash in hand for the Griffith Park project, which means they're going to need to seek bonds. And that is highly questionable as a result of the economic downturn. As trustee of Griffith Park, this City Council must not dedicate city assets to enable Autry's grossly underfunded elephantine expansion that would aid in a bet and breach of the Autry trustee's fiduciary duties. Please save Billy today and free the Southwest Museum later when it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker. After Mr. Johnson will be George Fishbeck.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Oscar Johnson. I was speaking about our condition in the United States, as we call it, America. We see how our... We see how our country has been sold through our political system. The political parties have came in this country called Republican Party and the Democrat Party. They are not American party. They don't have American interests. They are here to divide our country and to bring us down to a socialist and a communist country. We live in a democracy. And we also, we think about truth and justice. Our future should depend upon truth and justice. We should press forward toward truth and justice. Because if we don't, tomorrow will be the same day as today. There will be no tomorrow. Be the same thing we get today, pegging lies and deceit. We should be a government of truth, though. Yes, clean up first. Clean up the office in Washington. Clean up the offices of the governor. Clean up the offices of the district attorney. Clean up the offices of the mayor. Clean up the offices of the police department. Clean up the offices of the shaft department. Clean up the offices of the fire department. Clean up government, clean up corruption in government. Stop government waste. Share the resources equally among all citizens. But in reality, citizen means we civilized, though. What we have, are we American people, but we're not being governed by American government? We've been governed by something outside of American government. I think a change should come to this country so that we can be governed by American government and get American government out of America politics. And what's outside of American government is the Republican, Democrat Party. They associate us with animals. There's not no elephant or no donkey raised in America. That kind of government should go back and go to the independent party, the first party, what this country was founded upon. And we should change from an M.R. government to a R.R. government, from a government of unclean government to a clean government, and a government to respect for all peoples, though, regardless of the ethnic group or the ethnic or society economically. We should end economic racism, end the genocide in America going toward the American people, especially African-American males.
Thank you, sir. George Fishbeck is our next speaker. After George Fishbeck will be Aaron Leiter. Good morning. And Mr. Fishbeck, just before you start, just because by the sound of applause, it sounds like you may be speaking on the elephant issue. This is for general public comment, for things that are not on the agenda. Did you want to be heard on the elephant issue, or did you have comments that are on other items? Did you want to talk about the elephant issue today, sir?
I want to talk about my opinion.
Okay, why don't you wait on that, sir? This is for general public comment. I'll make sure that you're, we don't have that item before us right now. So as soon as we have that, I'll make sure we call you back. But this is for general public comment for items that are not on our agenda. The elephant issue is on the agenda, so we'll come to that in a little bit, if you don't mind. Thank you. Appreciate it. Aaron Leiter is our next. It's good to get applause when you haven't even spoken. That's good. Aaron Leiter is our next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I will be speaking on the elephant issue later today, but I'm here to speak on something different today for the council. And really, what I wanted to say is that during this process of working with the councilmen, learning how this process works, I've met some incredible people here on the council. And I want you to know that I have a huge amount of respect for all of you that have gotten into this position, the work that you've done to get yourselves where you are and the importance. I think I've really learned the importance of this council. The other thing, too, that I've been very pleased with is that the actual people here at City Hall have been incredibly helpful, friendly, generous with their time. You kind of get lost around this place a bit, and people have been amazingly generous and helpful. And I think that speaks well to this council and actually to the mayor, too, that these, what seems to be very positive people are working here at the council. I would ask that at this very, very difficult financial time in our country, people are struggling individually, that the council really guide and allow themselves to be guided by financial matters and really look for the greater good at all times. I feel confident this council will do the right thing and will continue to. And I have gained an interest in politics and an interest in this council, and I look forward to continuing on even beyond our issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate them. Phil Jennerjohn is our next speaker. And after that is Arnold Sacks.
Okay. All right, so ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address you and to address the--
Come a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you better. There you go.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address the city council and to address the city in general. My name is Phil Jennerjohn. I'm running for mayor of Los Angeles. I actually just picked up my papers over at the city clerk's office, and I am a qualified candidate, and I will be on the ballot in March. I'm a bit of an unknown politically, but I'd like to take the opportunity to tell you a little about myself. I'd like to start by telling you what I'm not. I'm not a candidate who has over two million dollars in my campaign account like Antonio Villagosa. I'm not a powerful, rich construction developer that can write checks for tens of thousands of dollars to any candidate he wishes. And I'm not a corrupt union leader who can guarantee tens of thousands of votes to any candidate that he wishes in an election, regardless of the quality or the character of that candidate. Because I am none of those things, I am exactly the type of private citizen who would be absolutely and totally ignored by a current mayor, Antonio Villagosa. And I am running because I think our city deserves better leadership than that. I intend to defeat him in this election, and I intend to end his political career. Now, my favorite political quote comes from President Andrew Jackson. He says that "one man with courage makes majority." And I'm here to tell the city that I am that man. I am armed with nothing but my own courage and a powerful sense of personal vision for the future of this city. The city's never seen a leader like me, a man who's unafraid to tell the truth and a man who's unafraid of the repercussions of telling the truth. In Antonio Villagosa, I see a corrupt and dishonest and unethical leader, and I plan to stop him. After the illegal immigrant rally in March of two thousand and six, the mayor stood in front of a huge crowd of citizens and said, quote, "There are no illegals here," unquote. It was an astonishing display of dishonesty and a complete lack of integrity. He was lying. He knew he was lying, and the voters of the city knew he was lying. In my opinion, I think the voters of this city, they shouldn't follow leadership like that. They should run from leadership like that. Thank you very much. My name is Phil Jennerjohn. I'm running for mayor.
Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. And after that is Chuck Tenen. Good morning.
Good morning, council. Arnold Sacks, thank you very much. Just three items I wanted to cover today. I read in today's newspaper, there seems to be some discord in the L.A. USD School Board. But what really caught my attention is that the head of the school board's contract is one point five million dollars for four years. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, one point five million dollars for four years, four hundred thousand a year. His assistant is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. People should be outraged about the salaries that are being spent for the leadership that, or the non-leadership that we're getting in the city and the departments that are used under the city's jurisdiction. This needs to end. There's a lot of commentary being made about government bailouts and the fact that these entities that are being bailed out, the corporate executives, are having their salaries cut to zero, one, no more benefits, whatever. We need to start looking at that as a form of government. You want to work in the government, we need to get some reasonable salaries out here because the fees that are being generated for new, new fees that are being generated are only paying for salary and benefits. Then there's a lot of uproar in the county lately regarding consensus scoring for awarding contracts. So I was curious to find out what program is used for awarding contracts in the city? Is it a consensus scoring basis also? And finally, on Friday, the council is going to consider advertising billboard inspection fees. But according to the item on the agenda, the fees that are going to be collected don't even cover the cost that will be incurred to do the inspecting. How the hell can that happen? The city's in a budget deficit and advertising illegal signs. You're not going to collect enough fees to cover the cost of doing the inspection. What the heck is going on with the city council? Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Our next speaker is Chuck Tenen.
Good morning, Council President Garcetti and council members. That sudden fear every time a bullet flies, it takes courage to reach out when others are silent. This city and the communities need to move forward to help stop gang violence, encourage gang prevention, help the kids with more youth programs, sufficient funding for these intervention programs and youth programs that the city of Los Angeles does not have but needs to have. Please support Janice Hahn's Awesome Song Project to help her community, all the communities in Los Angeles, and unite the hundreds of organizations in this city that talk about gang violence, stopping it, and kids' programs, but they don't do it because they don't have the money to do it. No one believes this is going to happen. It will. Like the song says, "It starts with you and me and the violence." Also, when I read in the L.A. Times about delays plaguing anti-gang plans, one hundred and five million a year for gang intervention, no money, always delayed. Yet Jeff Carr says, you know what? The only way we can do it is not based on politics. We need to do it and make that jump. Eight districts out of the fifteen council districts, gang reduction programs? What about the rest? You know what? We need to do it. Here is a tool and a way that this city can fund programs to help this number-one problem in this city. And hopefully, I was told that the nineteenth is not going to be the last session of city council. I don't know what the last date is, but you need to do this thing and work on the number-one problem and unite it so that can come up with funding to do the right things for all these things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenen. And thank you to all of our public comment individuals. That will return us to items that we had held on the table. Now we have twelve members, so let's take up the ordinances first. Those are items ten through fourteen. There's a card on fifteen, so we'll keep that on the table. And item thirty-one, please. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next, we've had a request to take item thirty out of order. If there's no objection, we'll take that item up next. Like to call on the chairs of the committees who dealt with this, Mr. Parks, Mr. Labange, to begin our comments. Anybody wishing to go first? Mr. Parks?
Yeah.
We'll go to Mr. Labange, and then the person who called special, Mr. Cardenas, will follow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to start this discussion off and just let you know, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of a four-hour Budget and Finance meeting Monday, which most of our time was taken up on this issue. We also looked at this issue in two thousand and six, and then we've had multiple sessions within the city council. The Budget and Finance Committee, on a three-to-two vote, looking at this very narrowly as it relates to the impact of the finances to the city, made a decision that it was not prudent at this time for the city to move forward on a forty-two-million-dollar project at the zoo, particularly when it would have cost fourteen million dollars of city money, which is labeled under MICOLA, and would have cost well over twenty million dollars over a twenty-year period to pay off that debt service. We also wanted to clarify that in dealing with this issue, that the money that is in the count that was raised by GLASSA is money that has not been used and is still in play. Also, that the two bond funds, Prop CC and Prop A2, are specifically voted on by the public for general, for use specifically for the master plan of the elephants. None of those sources have been touched, but the issue of the current forty-two-million-dollar project needs the city to go forward on fourteen million dollars of MICOLA funds. And that is the area in which the committee's financially viewed was not appropriate at this time. The issue that we've gone through and looked at, there is roughly twelve million dollars that have been spent. Of the twelve million dollars that have been spent, there's roughly a consideration of over three million that can be retrieved out of that twelve. There'd have to be more study to determine of the remaining nine million, that's what we call sunk costs, how much of that can be redesigned, recaptured, as it relates to looking at the larger issue of the zoo and that exhibit. What we thought we did was the most reasonable thing is address the financials for the city of L.A. because we know that at a minimum between now and June the thirtieth, we're going to be asking the council to be making decisions on somewhere between sixty and a hundred million dollars in cuts or variety of ways in which we'll balance the budget, only to be able to confront a maybe three- to four-hundred-million-dollar deficit in next year's budget. The same one point two or three million dollars that we're talking about spending today, or we're talking about before the committee to expend on a forty-two-million-dollar project, is the same one point two million dollars that we'd be speaking on for the cold weather shelter program or the after-school program for these, our students, or the program to not cut police officers, or the programs not to cut paramedics. These are all the same dollars that we're dealing with. And so in looking at it strictly from a financial situation, we thought it would be most appropriate not to go forward on that. We also thought it would be most appropriate, and looking at Mr. Cardenas's motion, that there are a variety of issues that were left unaddressed by the Budget and Finance, that they more appropriately would go back to the Arts Committee to address the things that were specifically related to placement of the elephant, whether there's a cost involved in creating a separate refuge, a variety of things that were asked for that that committee is more appropriate to deal with. Our narrow function dealt specifically with the expenditure of money at this time. We also asked the CAO to come back, and I want to add in there, which is not in the report, in forty-five days, to tell us whether it is appropriate at this time to look at the zoo in a more privatized manner, or how we can remove the impact of about five million dollars per year as it relates to this current general fund subsidy to the zoo. Those are issues that we thought were relevant to find out how we might find a way in which the zoo can be self-sustaining, just as we made the convention center absent their debt service, but on their day-to-day operating service, that they are now self-sufficient and do not get subsidized by the city's budget, much as we created enterprise funds in public works in which they, based on the amount of work that they are involved with, they create a revenue source that is not supplemented by the general fund. So we thought this was the best way to address this issue. Arts and Parks certainly has more of an involvement and understanding of the issues of the future of the elephants. And one of the things that, and I talked to Ms. Grue, and I don't want to take her thunder, but on, we'll add item D on the report to ask, and any other options that they may find appropriate as they look at the report and look at three, A, B, and C, that we ask them to look at other options that they may want to recommend. And so that gives ability for us as a council to address the financial issues that are relevant today, but also give the authority of the committee that deals with arts and parks, the ability to more appropriately and more in-depth look at the long-term issue of the zoo, and also make a recommendation of whether, in addressing this issue as we confront it today, whether they can address it without city funds, whether they can address issues that within the confines of the two grants, or a variety of issues that may confront them in general. That's something in which, this is what we decided on a three-to-two vote, and we'd hope that as we move forward, that the report, and one of the issues that we did not support the Arts-Parks Committee in receiving and filing Mr. Cardenas's motion, what we recommended is bifurcating it, and that we dealt with the financials and budget and moved back to the committee in dealing with the more appropriate issues for arts and parks. And so we'd ask today that we support on item thirty, the Budget and Finance Report, because we think it clearly and clinically addresses the issues and allows for further review and recommendations for the long-term health of the zoo, and the long-term health of animals, and the long-term health of our budget.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you very much. And good morning to everybody. And it's a very, very inspiring effort as we work for the betterment of our zoo here today. Mr. Parks, I appreciate the time that your committee spent on this issue. I appreciate the time that the committee that I chair spent on this issue. What we have before us today is an issue that we're all going to be facing due to the economic times that we're in. But what we don't have on the table yet, which I hope to bring back, is a commitment from the greatest of all in our city's contribution, is that of the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association. They have stepped up. Their emergency meeting last night and said they will pay the debt service. They will pay the debt service. And there's hundreds of city jobs right now that we're waiting to look at, worried about the future. But the opportunity exists that we can move forward with this project. The people of this county, the people of this city voted for improvements at the zoo. These votes took place and distributed, and please look, seventy-nine percent of the people of this city strongly believe in the zoo, strongly believe it's an educational conservation location where people could go and get touched. And I'm most proud of the people who work at the zoo, the people who care for the animals, who are sitting in the front row, who are here today to stand with us as we make this improvement. Mr. Parks, I would like to have gone the other way, because I believe we've worked very hard. We had a thirteen-to-two vote some years ago. We've had starts and stops with our Public Works Department that's trying to do so many things, and our Bureau of Engineering. Department that's trying to do so many things, and our Bureau of Engineering. But that being said, I'm going to take your advice for this committee and support the committee's report, but also ask that we all support D, which Mr. Parks spoke of, and I thank all of those to help in that, that GLAZA has stepped up. There is no one stepping up like this. The Library Foundation does a great job. GLAZA does a greater job for us. The Record Parks Foundation, starting, doing a great job. GLAZA has always been there for us. We believe it's important for the children of Los Angeles, and the joy, just like the joy you see when there's nothing but school buses at Exposition Park, nothing but school buses at Cabrillo Museum, nothing but school buses at the Los Angeles Zoo, nothing but school buses at Sepulveda Basin. All those are important factors. And I got on a school bus as a child, and I remember going to the old Los Angeles Zoo, which was a WPA project. And now we have an opportunity to have a world-class facility and move forward on it. I welcome the conversation, the discussion, the deliberations in the Arts and Parks Committee to look at a way to do this right and to move forward. I thank everybody who always votes. I thank everybody who voted to support the zoo in the county and the city of Los Angeles. And I ask for an "aye" vote, and ask that item D be attached to this. And I thank all the members of the council for the time that we've spent on this issue. It's real important that we don't take this away. We're here a short time, members. We're here a short time, whether it's four, eight, 12 years. The zoo's here for a lifetime. And I believe it's important for the children of this city and their parents and grandparents to have an experience. The challenges we're going to face, more people are going to use our public parks, they're going to go to our public museums, they're going to go to our zoo. And this is an opportunity. One cost that Disneyland pays for a whole family. So thank you very much, and we'll continue this to do the right thing for the city of Los Angeles, the right thing for the children of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas. After that, we have Ms. Gruel, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Zein. Mr. Cardenas.
Three minutes? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. We're here today because new information obtained through a recent lawsuit and also a Freedom of Information Act came to our attention earlier this year. The council did not have this information in 2006, and if you look at the tape, it was not deliberated like this in 2006 either. I believe if the council had examined the medical records, the underlying medical costs it takes to sustain elephants in zoos, and the rising construction costs, we would have made a sensible, more responsible decision in 2006. By the way, I did vote in 2006, "aye" for this matter. A decision that 12 other cities across the country have made, which is to stop the archaic practice of exhibiting elephants, that's what's before us today. Now that we have this information, we must act. The city will lose credibility and the public's trust if it does not do nothing after seeing the vital information and zoo medical records revealed through the Freedom of Information Act and public record requests, the very tools the public uses to inform us so that we can make the proper decisions. Through history, we've seen what happens when government does not act to reverse decisions and potential costly mistakes. I think the people would be proud of the city to see it as willing to reverse its mistakes and protect the public from huge financial hits in the present and in the future. We cannot ignore that 13 elephants have died at the L.A. Zoo since 1975. Along with those deaths came costly surgeries, costly medicine, and hundreds of hours of staff time trying to treat the ailments of elephants living in inadequate spaces. As seen with Gita, our own L.A. Zoo elephant, her medical care was costing the city $8,000 per month. This did not treat the disease, but provided the antibiotics and painkillers. Gita died two months after we took the vote in 2006, and Gita's chronic foot problems never went away. These types of ailments and costs will not go away even with the construction of the new exhibit. The new exhibit is still inadequate for animals of this size. This is not the only, this is not only about being humane, but this is about being fiscally responsible with the taxpayer dollars, especially with a department that is heavily dependent on the general fund. Today, we are in the midst of an economic struggle that has never been seen in this country in over 60 years. The fiscal implications of the elephant exhibit is of more relevance today than ever. As the mayor has called for cutbacks from all city departments, he has also called for cutbacks at the zoo. As a matter of fact, we're officially now in a recession. Mr. President, I'd like to call some witnesses forward, please. Okay, thank you. My time running, while they're coming up here.
It is, there's about 10 seconds left for those questions. Would you like to...
So when I ask them questions, the time's going to run as they respond?
No, just when you're asking the questions.
Okay. So thank you very much. Could we have former Los Angeles County CAO Richard Dixon come forward, Dr. Jennifer Conrad, who's a veterinarian for over 14 years and also worked for four years at the L.A. Zoo, and former San Francisco County Supervisor Max Gonzalez?
20 seconds.
Mr. Dixon?
Mr. Councilman? Thank you, Councilman Cardenas, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I am here today simply from a fiscal standpoint. I am not an animal person. I don't even own a pet. But I do think I understand dollars and cents. I spent 35 years working for Councilperson Han's father in the county. Six years of that, I was the county budget officer, three years the county treasurer and tax collector, and the last six years, the administrative officer. Since my retirement from the county, I've worked as a consultant for many public agencies across the country, largely in fiscal matters. I am also the past president of the Government Finance Officers of America. The project you have before you is proposed to cost $42 million in construction if you complete it, and would have roughly a $2 million minimum additional annual cost to operate with a minimum of four elephants. You're faced with an economy that is requiring you to cut existing costs. Historically, you have been contributing approximately $5 million to the operation of the zoo. If you were to add this $2 million cost for operating this one facility over the next 20 years, you're talking about roughly 40% increase in the general fund support of the zoo. You represent people that don't know whether they can afford the holidays, don't know whether they will have jobs, and don't know whether they will have a home over the next year. I urge you to stop this project now. I have heard arguments that it is cheaper to continue a project than to stop it. I will tell you, in 35 years of public service, and many years as a consultant, I have never found a case in which it was cheaper to spend money than to save money. There's a great deal of discussion about your obligation to repay county bond issue or city bond issue. I think that it is premature to say what if any repayment you would have to have until you have decided what you are going to do at the project site in the future. Negotiations with the county, reconsideration of what you are going to be doing can all be made in good time when the city is in a healthier financial position. I do not believe it is likely you will be required to give up most of that money. In both bond issues, that money is reserved solely for improvements at your zoo. It's not county money. It's money from the taxpayers the county is the custodian of, for you to select a project at the zoo that they will approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms... Excuse me, hold on. Former Supervisor Gonzalez, could you please tell us what your experience has been with the zoo in San Francisco and when you were a policymaker there?
Sure. I served as a member and the president of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. I served a single term and elected not to seek reelection. I started a law practice four years ago. Our county faced a similar decision in April of 2004. Two of our elephants had died at the zoo, and we voted by a supermajority to send the remaining elephants to the paused sanctuary. There were a number of issues that we dealt with at that time that I think that you are dealing with now. There were many sort of veiled arguments and even veiled threats that did not come to pass. And for that reason, I came here today to simply share my experience with you. First of all, in a variety of committee meetings, we were told that the zoo's accreditation might be jeopardized if we made this decision. That never came to fruition. We were also told that if we moved the elephants away from the zoo, that visitorship would be impacted and there would be loss of revenue. There has never been, since that vote, any argument put forward by the zoo that visitorship numbers were impacted by the decision. And I had a conversation this morning with the current president of the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco, who shared the visitorship numbers with me. In the year following this decision, visitorship went down by 1%. Within a couple of years, it was up by 13%. None of this is likely attributable to this decision, and in fact, when the numbers went up, it was probably because there was an aggressive advertising campaign and special exhibitions at the zoo. Let me also say that anecdotally, we heard from a number of people, families, who said that for philosophical reasons, they had always been opposed to going to the zoo or taking their children there, because they saw it as a very outmoded way of dealing with animals. And as a result of what they saw as a forward-looking decision, they felt more comfortable being there, and they thought that there were educational opportunities to discuss how animals should be treated in a larger society. Finally, let me just say two things. First of all, you're not making a decision to close the zoo. You're really making a decision that's very limited to a particular-sized animal, that there is ample evidence now, does not do well in captivity, even with three or four acres to work with. 12 other cities have already made this decision. And if you're concerned about the impact that this might have on children who won't get to see live elephants or something like that, let me just say, I think that you could encourage your zoo to put together some kind of virtual exhibition, perhaps something, a live feed from a sanctuary or something like that. I don't think it would cost anywhere near the numbers that I've heard thrown around for this new exhibition. There are clearly other ways that we can have animals in a zoo, but also a teaching mechanism that wouldn't impact these other concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Conrad, can you speak to the veterinary costs to these foot ailments that prevail in elephants?
Yes, my name is Jennifer Conrad, and I'm a wildlife veterinarian. I went to UC Davis, and I've been a veterinarian for 14 years. And I just wanted to mention that when Gita died, Gita, one of the elephants at the L.A. Zoo, when she died in 2006, even though she had been a recipient of the new care regime, like the new walking for two miles and not being chained at night, she still had severe foot problems. In fact, on her knee cropters, her autopsy report, there's evidence that her left hind foot, her left front foot, and her right foot, right front foot, were affected. So there were abscesses about to form in those feet. She had severe arthritis, and this comes from the fact that she's in the zoo where she cannot walk. It's nothing, there's nothing that can be done about it if they're in a zoo. They need the space to walk. The other thing I wanted to mention, which is very important, is that I looked at her medical records, and I did the cost analysis for what it would cost me to buy these medications that she was on. And my wholesale price was $20,000 a month. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that there's extreme amount of money being, would be necessary to maintain four or more elephants at the L.A. Zoo, because they are inevitably going to have feet problems. So that's really what was most important for me to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. President, I'll push my button again. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. And thank you very much to the folks who are here. Nice to see you, Supervisor. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Zein, and then Mr. Smith. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. If I could ask the CAO to come forward, and CLA maybe as well? And as we, Mr. Parks mentioned, there's a motion that's going to be forwarded, Mr. Smith, I think Mr. Parks is second, and item D, that will look at options, because we have some new information that has been provided to us, that GLAZA has agreed to provide the debt service payment. So I want to ask some financial questions of all of you. One, as we did get your report, colleagues, if you haven't seen it, there is a worst-case and a best-case scenario before us. And to the speakers that are here on both sides, this is a very emotional issue for individuals. It is, it really is, I've described it before, there's three separate issues before us. One is, do we have elephants at the zoo? The other issue is, what's the best fiscal decision that we make in the city? And the third, I think, is the future of Billy, and there's a lot of discussion about that. I'm going to focus solely on the financial aspect of this. And we had some of this discussion the other day. Now, I had a conversation, and I respect Mr. Dixon, he's been around a long time, but I talked to the current CAO at the county of Los Angeles, both last night and this morning. The current CAO has indicated that they have talked to their lawyers and are moving forward to ask for the reimbursement of the money that has been put forward. And so there's no discussion, there's no, do we know what they're going to do? There is room for clearly negotiation as that goes forward. But I want to ask a question. If in fact, one of the options available to us is that the nine, let's just take $9 million, that $9 million that has currently already been spent, that we do not believe will be used for any other purpose, goes back to the county, and the county says you can use that for the zoo, you can go back and use some capital expenses. However, the money we have to pay back to the county of Los Angeles is from what source of funds?
Basically, the money that we go back is the Prop, Proposition A2 money that approximately $5 million...
If we could have quiet in the chambers, please?
This is, we would repay that source, and that money, the source of repayment would come from the general fund.
The general fund?
The general fund.
So currently, the, as proposed, if we didn't have the GLAZA, it's $1.2 million that is impacted by the general fund. But it would be $9 million. It's $1.2 million per year. But $9 million we'd have to give the general fund.
Yes, if I might just step back. We have used several funding sources, Proposition A2 and the Prop CC, the counties and the city. We would have to repay that $10 million back in a short period of time. Per the county, they're looking at a 60-day window. We haven't heard a final from the county CAO, but we'd be looking at making that $10 million repayment within this fiscal year. And that is, would come from the general fund.
Okay. And so that's a $10 million hit to the general fund?
Yes.
So if GLAZA is able to make the commitment, and there's no general fund commitment for paying back MICLA, our other option, if we don't move forward, is that it's going to be a $9 million hit to the... Now, the second question I asked you was, is there any money that we have used to, general fund money, other than MICLA debt, that we have used to build buildings on the...
At the zoo?
Yeah.
Not for this project? Have we, I don't think we used anything else. No, we have not.
Okay. On any other projects, have we used $9 million of general fund money?
There are other projects across the city where we have injected some money...
No, no, at the zoo.
But not, I don't believe so in the zoo.
Yes, okay. They're looking now at that question.
It looks like there is.
Maria Cardenas with the CAO's office, Municipal Facilities Division. In 2005, '06, we did, the city council budgeted $2 million to pay for design costs for the reptile and insect and interpretive center and the rainforests of the Americas Project.
Okay, so $2 million total?
$2 million out of the $172 million construction program for the zoo.
$2 million of general fund, okay. So there would not be, we wouldn't be proposing going forward, spending $9 million in capital, general fund money for capital?
No.
That would not be the recommendation?
We recommend that we proceed with the Pachyderm project.
Yeah. Again, colleagues, we're talking about the financial aspect. Bill and I've had this conversation, and his position on not wanting to have elephants there. But if people are holding their, you know, putting their hat on, it's too costly to do it, you need to look at the CAO report. Very rarely have we gone against a CAO report that says that the best, the worst-case scenario is $21.84 million, best-case scenario is $6.49 million that we will be impacting of general fund money. fund money. And so I think that we need to take that into consideration, and as vice chair of the Budget Committee, that was what we talked about. There is no, you know, it's not sketchy, it's not, muddied waters. The CAO at the county, who was the current CAO, has said, we are going to ask for the money back, and we have talked to our lawyers to do that. And so that is the amount of money that they're looking for. So I think that is the issue that they're going forward. And it couldn't, it might not be $9 million, but we do have an offer, I think, the item D that allows us to go back and to really affirm the GLAZA offer of being able to do that 1.2. They've talked about even being able to raise the money that was the MYCLA dollars going forward. And you'll hear from, and we've heard from all sides on this, you'll hear from a lot of the board members and others who have supported the zoo, that they made commitments two years ago, when the council adopted this, and they feel this could have a longer-term financial impact on the Los Angeles Zoo.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl.
So I agree with Mr. Parks's and Mr. Smith's on item D to be added that allows us to look at that option, because I'm very concerned about the fiscal impact that this is going to have on the city of Los Angeles. And I'm over time, so I may push my button again. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gruehl. It's all right. Mr. Zine is next, then Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Dennis P. Philip Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. President. The questions I have, the attendance at the zoo, are the numbers up or down? This year compared to the last few years?
Actually, the zoo would be best appropriate, but looking at the numbers that have been provided, that the attendance has been increasing over the last five years.
Increasing in the last five years? You're from the zoo, ma'am?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Denise Barret from the Los Angeles Zoo.
That's what the renovation is taking place at the zoo?
Yes. 1997-98, it was around 1.2 million, and the last completed fiscal year was 1.6, so 400,000 increase over the last 10 years.
Okay. The bond measure that was passed, part of that being used for this elephant exhibit, did that bond measure specify it would be used for an elephant exhibit, or was that bond measure passed to enhance the operations at the zoo? In other words, was it specifically designated for elephant exhibit, or was it general-purpose use, modernization, modification of the zoo?
The bond measure, both on the city's CC and the county's A2, were for improvements at the zoo.
It didn't specify any specific part of that, just that money would be appropriated to enhance operations at the zoo?
And not operations.
Exhibits.
Basically, infrastructure exhibits, capital improvements--
But it didn't say, it didn't say which ones?
No.
So it could be for a bird exhibit, for a snake exhibit, for any other type of exhibit, not specifically designated for elephants?
That's correct.
Okay.
However, the city executed a grant agreement with the--
Can't hear you.
However, on the county measure for the $12 million, the city executed a grant agreement specific to the Pachyderm Forest exhibit at the zoo.
That was the city's decision to do?
Yes.
But the bond measure that was passed--
The bond measure specified $12 million for the zoo for a master plan project. The city then executed a grant agreement.
Okay.
And we spent $5 million of their $12 million.
The mention of Mr. Cardenas, credibility and trust, a concern I have is this body took a vote, and many times we take a vote. People may agree with that vote or not agree with that vote, and then something comes up later. And I know we spent four and a half hours, apparently they spent four hours in the committee, and I think that deliberation takes a time, a period of time, there's no question about that. But a decision was made two years ago to do something. I didn't agree with that decision. I voted no originally on the $40 million loan with Mr. Rosendahl. I think we were the two dissenting votes on that for a variety of reasons I don't want to go into now. How many times has it come to the attention where something is done, a vote's taken, something moves forward, and then we come back with a whole different focus as we're debating something as if it's brand new? How many times has that happened since you've been here?
That's a good question. I do not know.
Because when we talk about credibility and trust, it troubles me, credibility and trust means that we're making a decision and that decision is researched, we're making a decision and that decision is the democratic process of this body. And we deliberate before we make that decision. So if we're talking about credibility and trust, when we do that, and then we're backtracking as we're doing now, and spending this time because some information, whatever information was there should have been brought forward at that time, that decision could have been made. And if we're talking about credibility and trust, which to me is critically important and transparency, it's been mentioned 13 elephants have died since 1975 at the L.A. Zoo. How many elephants have died in the history of the L.A. Zoo?
I'm going to let the zoo to record.
You didn't hold my time?
I held some of it.
You didn't hold it very long.
Didn't ask for it to be held.
John Lewis, Director of the Zoo, our records indicate 12 elephants have died in the history of the zoo.
12 elephants have died at L.A. Zoo in the history of the zoo?
Yes, sir.
That was in the old zoo and the new zoo?
No, that's the current site. I don't have records on the old zoo.
On the old zoo, that was in Griffith Park?
Yes, I don't have those records.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Do you have a, Mr. Carden?
Thank you.
Total of 33? And I don't know how, I don't know how to verify that.
Hold on.
Well--
Okay, hold on, Mr. LeBange.
Mr. LeBange, I'm simply asking a legitimate question. You don't have to get angry with it. The fact is, if 33 elephants have died, maybe they don't belong in the zoo. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
First, I would like to say thank you to the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association for everything they've done for the city of Los Angeles. I know the private citizens, and they've stepped up time and time again in supporting the zoo. But I also wanted to refer to this letter on December 2, where there's a reference to a commitment to put forth funds that were essentially due with the debt service of up to $14 million over the period of whatever obligations MYCLA funds have determined. But I wanted to ask the CAO or the CLA or maybe the city attorney, the association is an entity, but does it have a legal commitment to perform and actually deliver those funds over the period of time? Is there any way in which the city can protect itself if for some reason, given dire economic times, we don't know what's going to happen next six months, next two years? It is a great group of folks who have done tremendous work for the zoo, but does this letter fulfill a legal commitment to perform over the period of time and deliver the funds that have been identified?
I think that's a question that we'd like to ask the city attorney--
I can't hear you.
I think that's a question that we'd like to ask the city attorney. I think what's been proposed and put on the table here is essentially, as far as the city is concerned, is we would go out, secure the loan, and they would pay the debt service, much like we would take a loan on a mortgage and they would make the monthly payments for us. Now, the question as far as the legality, the legality is up to, we need to ask the city attorney.
Okay, so I'm not getting an answer right now. You're saying what we could do, but I'm not getting an answer as to the legal commitment and performing and the payment, should we go that route? Can anyone answer that at the table?
The city could execute a contract with GLAZA, which would formalize that commitment that they've made at their meeting last night to pay the debt, the annual debt service for the 14-plus million dollars for the MYCLA payment.
But it's an association, and an association can dissolve itself. An association essentially is a body of volunteers. How do we make sure we can collect?
GLAZA has been in existence for many years. Mr. Lewis could probably elaborate on the length of time that they've been in service to the zoo.
Now, believe me, I am not questioning the integrity or the will or the prowess or the fiscal stature of GLAZA's previous actions. I applaud them, I thank them, because many children in the city have benefited from that support, don't get me wrong. But today, we have to make a decision, and I'm not hearing an answer.
Counselman, I think you did get an answer. I think what we can do is whatever legal requirements needed by the city to formalize that, so there's an obligation. GLAZA was formed before the new zoo was opened, and they've been supporting the zoo on and off throughout its existence. And as we've said before, they've brought, you know, over $20 million for the various projects, they delivered on those. They've already transferred $4.8 million towards this project. People have questioned that, but the fact is, it's been transferred. They had to do that upfront before the contracts could be let. So they have a good track history currently in the management that they have and the board that they have, and they would, they can be made legally binding on this offer.
If I may add, if we go down this route, certainly we would be happy to work with GLAZA to see if we can secure some sort of a letter of credit in that regards, but certainly we need to sit down with them and have those discussions.
Well, thank you. In these perilous economic times, I mean, no one has a crystal ball, but the fact is, this council, this city's going to have to make some very hard decisions on our resources. There's a whole range of priorities that have come before us, and well, thank you for your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker. Councilwoman Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a couple of points, and I understand that Mr. LeBange is fighting for what he believes in, and I respect him for that. Before our meeting today, he asked me if I had ever been in a situation like this, and I had to tell him, oh, yes, many times. Most of the projects and ordinances that you have seen me bring before this council, I've always had to fight enormous opposition, even from within my own city family, because everybody's got an agenda and that's just the way it is. But for me, I gave you my vote the first time we voted on this, because it was your district, you believed in it, and I told you the second time, I wasn't going to go that route, because for me, the issue is, it all boils down to whether or not we believe we should have animals of this magnitude in captivity or not. And I don't want any, I really, thanks, but I don't want any applause. I just want to put this on the record and say this to all of you listening publicly, because that's how I feel. The first time I voted on that, I voted as a professional courtesy to you, because it's your district and you believed in it and you'd worked hard on it, even before you were elected to office, you were working on this issue. But personal, way down deep, the question for me is, again, whether we keep magnitude, animals of this magnitude in captivity or not? And for me, everything evolves from answering that question. And I think that's why it is a difficult situation that we are in. I know how I feel. I also want to be fiscally responsible. I don't want to be known as a council who, you know, halfway through something decides, oops, let's do something else now. So I chaired with Mr. Cardenas, I wanted to be fiscally responsible. If you follow the theory that an animal of this size with this many challenges, an animal that is at risk to this level should not be in captivity, then how do we utilize the money that has been spent, encumbered, already put to use to its best use? How do we best use the money that has been voted on by the voters in a responsible and transparent and on-the-record way? And I appreciate that GLAZA has stepped up to do this, and I think it's incredible. What an incredible support group the zoo has, and they are to be commended. It seems that Budget and Finance has crafted what appears to be a reasonable solution, at least for today. I think it's, the report in the section is D, I guess the motion is coming around. And before we vote again, for the final time, I would appreciate it if our chair would, again, put on the record for all to hear and all to really understand why that may be the most logical pathway to take at this time. But again, I think the essence of this, whether you believe an elephant should be in captivity or not, one last point, because I shared this with a very good friend yesterday, called lobbied, about this comment about, you know, schoolchildren and the kids want to see the elephants. I have to tell you, kids are a lot more advanced now than they were when we were growing up. They watch Animal Planet, they look on the internet, they do live feeds in their classroom, and to my amazement, I have gotten letters from kids in my own district, and they may not understand the political process, but what they've said to me, which is absolutely amazing, why are you spending $40 million on this and we don't have any books? I never expected-- And I, and I, thanks again, but I'm not, that's okay, thank you. But what I'm saying is, you know, and they may not understand, we're not the school board, we don't approve the money for the books or not, but it is an interesting phenomenon because they have access to experiences that we may not have had when we were growing up, and they seem perfectly comfortable with it in a way that maybe we don't understand. So maybe we need to listen to them, too. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker. After Mr. Rosendahl is Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like a commitment from everybody in the audience that we deal with 45,000 homeless people with the same energy we spend on elephants. I want everybody to agree to that. I've seen more people since I've been in city council only three years on this issue than any other issue. It's an important issue, because I love elephants and I'm an animal lover completely, but I want that kind of social commitment to human beings that we're giving to an elephant. Can I have that from everybody? Everybody? Clap, come on! Okay, all right. Now that I got your commitment to the other issues, I want to make two things clear. One, two years ago, I voted no on this. I voted no on it for a lot of the same reasons we've had hours and hours and hours of discussion this time. So I'm not going to get into the politics of the elephants. I love elephants, okay? Here's what I'm going to do. There's a motion circulating here that sends it back to Tom's committee. Now, some people say, no, get it over with now, vote up, vote no. I'm not there, and I'll tell you why. Because GLAZA has stepped to the plate and have always stepped to the plate and have always been there, and out of respect to your organization over there and to your commitment to all of the animals in the zoo, when Mr. Smith and Mr. Parks puts this motion forward, even though I am not for the elephant staying at the zoo, I respect the process that it goes back to a committee and have the issues of what was just presented to us today in this paper get some honest hearing. But I want my folks to know, I know they're putting their finger at me, that I truly do not want the elephant there, but I think we need to respect these folks who've made that zoo the zoo, and it should go back to Tom's committee for further discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have not spoken, I'm going to reserve my comments for later if necessary. We've got 30C circulating, that is the language, that's amendment that says what Mr. Parks and I worked on, and that was to send it back to the committee, identify the money, and then show us the money, basically. And so with that, we are introducing 30C, and I call for the question.
Can't call for the question even with a short speech like that, so, next goes, but somebody else can. Mr. Cardenas is next? Sorry, technically, can't. Well, okay, if that was a point of clarification that you'd introduced it, then the question is called, which we'll take a vote on. He didn't give any substantive debate on it.
Point of clarification?
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Are we voting on something, including what Mr. Smith has--
No, the call to question would just be, if there's an objection, a vote to end debate, nothing more than that. We don't have anything else before us yet.
And then go C.
Okay. Is there any objection to calling the question? Okay, if not, the question is called, which means debate is ended. For the uninitiated out there, it's a parliamentary thing to do, to call the question, that just means to end debate. There was no objection to that. Are there any points of information or clarification, Mr. Parks? And again, since the question has been called--
Just for clarification--
--we cannot debate the issue anymore, Mr. Parks.
Just for clarification, it's my understanding that with Mr. Smith's motion that I second, that removing the Budget and Finance report as amended, and that would add D.
What would come next is we would look at his motion, because that was the last one introduced. If there is no objection to that motion, it will be accepted as friendly. If there is an objection, we'll vote on the motion--
It's a friendly amendment to the Budget and Finance--
And then we vote on the report.
Okay, very good. I just want to clarify, it's not altering it, it's amending it with a friendly amendment.
Correct. Now, is there any objection? Now, we have Mr. Smith's motion before us, is there an objection to it? Is there any objection? Okay? Because there's an objection, it will require a vote now. What we are voting on is-- What we are voting on is, right now, 30C, which is before us, whether to amend that into the report. It adds one more item, that would be D in the budget and finance report. That should be before you, if you don't have a copy, city clerk, let me know. Yes, Mr. Zine?
Then go to Mr. Labonge's committee.
No, it is just, right now, yes, it would instruct that to happen, but this is just whether or not to pass that piece, and then we take up the budget and finance committee report. The first vote right now is on 30C. Since you objected, it won't be accepted as a friendly amendment, because anybody can object. When anybody objects, it is not a friendly amendment. Remember, a friendly amendment means unanimous. So we are voting just on 30C. We always take motions in reverse order, this was the last one submitted. Okay?
Just another point of clarification.
Yes, Mr. Zine.
Regarding the options for funding, so, to find funding for this particular project to go forward with the exhibit at the zoo.
No, it is, it is, it does not opine on that at all. This is on its own, it just merely says to request Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee to identify alternative options for funding and to bring back the entire matter to council by January 24, 2009. That is a standalone statement, does not opine as to whether the rest of the budget and finance committee report goes forward or does not go forward.
But it's requesting that funding be found if it's available.
It just says to report back with options for funding.
But if we wish to close that exhibit and to have the elephant sent to a sanctuary, we would not be supporting 30C.
You could or could not. It does not stop you from, either way, voting how you want on the budget and finance report. You could say, moving forward the budget and finance report, which halts moving forward, but at the same time looks at the opportunity of looking at alternative financing, or you could say that you want to vote against stopping the exhibition, and you want to look at alternative funding sources. So you still can vote either way. Okay? All right, so 30C is before us. Let us open the roll on 30C. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, four noes.
30C passes. That will be now, to amend, that will be amended and attached now to the overall vote on the budget and finance committee report. So now we are voting on all of budget and finance report plus 30C. Okay? Please open the roll. Please open the roll as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, two noes.
Okay, that passes as amended. So what has happened, just for members of the public and for the city council, we have passed the budget and finance committee report, which referred the following issues relative to the Elephant Pakarderm exhibit back to Arts Parks Health and Aging Committees for further consideration. These were A, B, and C. Instructed the CAO and CLA to report back to council relative to an analysis of options for privatization. It was everything that was from the budget and finance report, plus asking the Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee to identify alternative options for funding and to bring the entire matter back to council by January 24, 2009. Okay?
I'd like to clarify.
Yes.
It was, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parks, the budget chairman just told me that his interpretation of this motion, C, was that, for example, part of his report was to stop the Pakarderm exhibit, and that that would take place if C is adopted.
That's B on the original budget and finance report.
So the instruction to staff, to Mr. City Engineer, is to stop for the moment.
Yes, number two, not B, it's number two.
Do not spend any further money. His committee has till January 24 to identify other resources.
Excuse me, who's his?
Mr. Labonge's committee.
Mr. Labonge, I'll walk through exactly what we passed. First, we disapprove the recommendation of Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee to receive and file the motion. Second, we have just passed, instruct Department of Public Works, they are now instructed, pending the mayor's signature, to stop all appropriations and not approve any new or extensions to any contracts related to the Elephant Pakarderm exhibit. Three, we have referred the following issues back to Arts Parks and Health, sorry, Arts Parks Health and Aging. One, costs associated with transferring the remaining elephant. Two, alternative uses for the current exhibition. Three, status of elephant exhibits that have closed around the United States. And four, requesting that the committee look at alternative options for funding and bring back the entire matter by January 24, 2009. That is what we have passed, and that's what we'll move forward. Okay? Oh, sorry, number four, instructing the CAO and CLA to report back to the council relative to analysis of options for privatization of the zoo.
Anything relevant to dollars means that it also has to go to the budget committee? See, that's my point. Did you understand that, Mr. Parks?
Yeah, where there's a general fund impact, that will be the, the president refers, not to speak of myself in third person, I refer things to the budget and finance committee as well. I don't want to start sounding like Bob Dole or something.
Well, I just like to clarify that inherently, in having the Pakarderm exhibit go forward, and also in both the CAO report and CLA report, they do refer to the added ongoing cost to add elephants, so I'm of the opinion that regardless, it would have to go to the budget committee, because there are general funds involved, because every year, present and past, has been general funds going to the zoo.
We'll sort that out.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr., any last points of clarification? This has been voted on, yes, Mr. Labonge.
The committee is to understand the gift that was been put on, this exceptional gift that has been put on.
Hold on, hold on one second, Mr. Labonge.
By Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association, correct?
If we go into opining on.
That's it, that's it, right?
Yes, if we go to opining on stuff, we should reopen and reconsider.
But you have that, though. Thank you.
Okay. So we have the previous Arts Parks Health and Aging report, does anybody move to receive and file that? Otherwise, that also stays with us for, I'll go ahead and move that, to receive and file that. We can open the roll on receiving and filing, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That previous one is received and filed. Okay. We will now, thank you, everybody, for your patience and your understanding as we explain that to everyone, and we will go to the next item that has been called special. If we can take four, please. Actually, item, if we can take four next.
And that was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas, who's called item four special.
Yes, Mr. President, it's my understanding that this item did get, Mr. President, it's my understanding that item number four did get comment in committee, and it's not required that we have public comment, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, but there are public comment cards, Mr. President? Are there public comment cards?
There are cards on number four, we have about, let's see, about 10 to 15 cards right now?
If we could open it up for six minutes on each side?
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that. And there's some people who did not mark what they're for, have general comments, so I'd ask them just to identify which side of the issue that they're on. Shane Devens is our first speaker. Shane Devens here? If Shane Devens is not here, is Diana Marks? Oh, okay. And which side are you on, sir? Four? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to address this first question towards the entire city council. Is there anyone on this board before taking this vote that would have a conflict of interest?
Come a little closer, so we can hear you, sir.
Is there anyone on this board that for any reason would have a conflict of interest before they vote on the public access issue?
I'm sorry, sir, during public comment, by state law, we can't directly respond, but we can hear your comments, for sure.
Okay, yeah. Has anyone ever received any donations to their campaigns from Time Warner, AT&amp;T, or Verizon? Will you raise your hands if you did, because that would be a conflict of interest, and we'd ask respectfully that you would remove yourself from the vote? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Diana Marks. Now, which side are you on, ma'am, on this?
I'm for public access.
Okay.
Diana Marks, producer, one for the record. There is a need for public access. The 14 stations in several disadvantaged communities will no longer be provided. Hands-on internships, professional mentoring, our future media, news, politician, performing arts will no longer be provided, and we will be losing a lot of jobs. President-elect Obama did do a book review out of the same studio, Time Warner East Valley, the same studio that my program is out of. There will be a discontinuer of live outreach programs with home call-in participations that will be lost. YouTube does not provide the hands-on training nor the equipment. Our right to freedom of speech for all is in jeopardy. The monopoly of Time Warner AT&amp;T merger must be overturned, with other providers, competitors, which meet the needs of our communities. It is our constitutional right.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Vin DeBona is our next speaker. And after that, we'll hear from Peter Palmieri. Vin DeBona, and then after that is Peter Palmieri. You're on deck, sir.
President Garcetti and council members. My name is Vin DeBona. I am executive producer of America's Funniest Home Videos, a 35-year producer-director in television. I'm former chairman of the Caucus for Producers, Writers, and Directors here in LA, and I'm vice chairman of the council at Emerson College, one of the most prestigious communications colleges in America. I believe in public access television. I believe it's a forum for learning, and it's a craft for disseminating information. If we take the events of the last hour here in the council and distill that into what might happen tonight in local television here in Los Angeles, I would wager that perhaps a 25-second soundbite might discuss the issues of the last hour.
Thank you.
In public access, I believe we have an entire night that might be dedicated to that.
Thank you very much, Vin DeBona. Nice to see you as well.
Thank you.
And we look forward to Emerson College coming, I think, a point of order, Mr. Rosendahl?
And Mr. Cardenas, with your permission as a point of order, what I would like to see happen is ask the staff to come up, I got a whole bunch of questions, and then I would like to open up public comment, so that they could all get a chance to speak on this issue. I think it's a significant issue, rather than speak before.
So procedurally, you'd want to have the testimony first, and then, there's been a, well, there's been a motion for six minutes, so that's what's on the table, so we could halt and have experts come forward first, but we, is there any problem with doing it in that order?
Great, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so, but it'd be Mr. Cardenas' time first, so.
Great.
We will then come back, and we will finish out the six minutes after we hear from the experts, thank you, I mean, from the city staff.
Yeah, and procedurally, I want more than six minutes. I want them all to get a chance to speak.
We'll take that motion up next, afterwards.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. And it was six and six, so a total of 12, but we'll talk to the president about that in a second. Also, those of you who are here for public comment, what Mr. Rosendahl asks is that we get some more information from the staff, and then you make public comment, so your public comment time is still reserved, okay? Thank you. Do we have a representative from ITA, city attorney, and CAO up front? CAO? We'll give you time to get the right person here, if you're not, if you're not the one. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Information Technology Department. Is the city legally obligated by federal or state law to carry out PEG access?
No.
You can have the city attorney answer that, or ITA.
Yes, Mark Wolf with ITA. I'll let the city attorney respond to that question.
Good morning, Marie McTeague from the city attorney's office, and the answer's no.
Okay, so we're not obligated by law?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Prior to the state regulation of cable franchise agreements, what bodies regulated cable matters within the city of Los Angeles?
The Information Technology Agency was delegated the authority to oversee the franchises of the cable television companies in the city of Los Angeles, going back into the 1970s.
Now, was the city considered to be more on the aggressive side of having public access, or more on the laxadaigle, laxadaigzickle side?
More on the authority side.
I'm sorry?
More on the authoritative side. And William Imperial, good morning, for ITA, by the way.
Yeah, but what I mean by aggressive, when you look at other cities, other jurisdictions, and what they required of public access, did we have a more robust public access here than most other jurisdictions in California?
Yes, we did. Beginning in 1987, with the former franchises that were in effect, the city took a very aggressive stance in making sure that the public access studios were updated, upgraded, and maintained at all times according to the franchise agreements. Equipment lists were spelled out in the franchise agreements as well, as well as hours of service, and all of those other issues that go into public access operations.
All right, thank you. What legislation changed the way in which local entities regulate the public cable industry now?
In 2006, the state legislature passed the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act, called DIFCA now, that preempted the city's right to continue to franchise the cable operators in the city of Los Angeles. So since 2006, we've been under that paradigm.
No, but who did that?
The state legislature did, and then the governor.
So the state legislature passed a law, and then the governor signed it, and now that created the new world that we're in today, when it comes to this matter?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, since December 2006, what provisions have, has the city of Los Angeles undertaken relative to PEG access?
With regard to PEG access, the DIFCA allowed the city to continue with the same structure going forward until January 1, 2009. So we basically have been operated under the old franchises pursuant to DIFCA, but that will end on January 1, 2009.
You said old franchises. What are you talking about?
Our city franchises are considered now old and nullified by DIFCA. So those are what we call the old or legacy franchises.
So do these providers of information, these cable companies and telephone companies, do they now have franchises somewhere else?
Yes, they do, with the Public Utilities Commission pursuant to the new state law that we've been talking about, DIFCA.
Now, that means the Public Utilities Commission could have looked at Los Angeles and said, you know what, we want you to go ahead and continue doing exactly what you were doing in the city of Los Angeles. Could they, at the state level, put those requirements on them, so that we wouldn't have people so upset about the situation we're in? Could they have kept it the normal way it is right now? Could they have asked that of them and required that of them?
DIFCA did not permit the PUC to do that. The state legislature in DIFCA did not permit the Public Utilities Commission to have authority over public, educational, and governmental access. So what it did is, it left the cities, all the cities in the state of California, with the obligation to continue PEG access if they so chose after January 1, 2009. And that's the situation we're in now.
Okay. And with that, did they provide the city an opportunity to actually collect funds from these companies? And if we are, can we use that for public access, that 1% that they're allowing us to collect? And if we can use it for public access, are we limited on what we can use it for?
Yes, that's the trade-off, is as of January 1, 2009, the city can begin to collect a 1% gross revenue PEG access fee, which will, which will be about $5 million to the city, but under federal law, it's limited to capital expense use only, meaning it's not for operations, everyday rent, staffing of the public, educational, and governmental access stations.
So we conceivably could legally use that money under federal law, and actually maybe buy cameras, maybe fix the doors, change the locks, et cetera, paint the place, even rent out a space, but we cannot use that money to have camera people, people in the mixing room, people to provide the tapes, et cetera? So we can't pay for bodies at all with that money, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And by the way, the current system right now, do they have bodies in these facilities, allowing people to do their tapes and their productions, and then so they can turn them in and put them on the air?
Yes, Time Warner, which is the largest cable company in the city of Los Angeles, employs 48 full-time public access employees and four part-time public access employees. Those employees will have to be shifted to somewhere else in Time Warner's system.
Unless Time Warner, just out of the generosity of their heart, were to decide to keep it going? But they're not obligated, required, or have any agreements with the state, the federal government, or the city of Los Angeles to do so?
Yes, that's correct. No obligation.
So basically, with this new state legislation, they got off the hook, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So can you please explain for the people who don't understand what PEG means, what's a PEG channel?
In 1984, the Cable Act, Federal Cable Act, allowed cities to put into place public, educational, and governmental access channels and stations, and obligated, and also allowed the cities to obligate the cable companies to provide those channels and the signal, so that people could go to a studio, general public people could go to a studio and have their opinions and programs aired, whether it be religious, whether it their opinions and programs aired, whether it be religious, whether it be for community access. The government was also allowed to put into place their own channel, something that we're on right now. And also, the city was allowed to put into place an educational channel. In the city of Los Angeles, we have the LA Unified School District Channel, and we also have an educational channel managed by LACTAC, a board, 501(c)(3) board.
Okay, thank you. So what federal or state laws require the city of Los Angeles to carry PEG access?
There are no requirements that the city or—
Hold the mic a little closer.
There are no requirements under either federal or state law that the city provide PEG access.
Okay, so there's not a requirement?
Correct.
Okay. Now, what fiscal impacts does AB 2987 have on the city of Los Angeles?
Well, actually, that's one thing that DIFCA did, is it left in place the 5% franchise fee. We currently collect $5 million, $25 million from the incumbent cable operators. It also allows for the collection of the 1% PEG access fee. But in essence, if we continue with the funding for PEG access, we estimate that the public access studios cost between $6 to $8 million to operate annually. So if we talk about the shift, the city comes up short.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, and I want to thank you so much for your attention on this issue. I'll push my button again. Thank you.
You do have six minutes, if you want, as opening. But if not, Ms.—Mr. Rosendahl, and then Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the public, those who want to speak on public access, we'll get a chance for all of you to speak, because it's very important that you get that opportunity. But I want you to listen to my questions here. Many of you know that I was in the cable business for 22 years, and I was a big supporter of public access. I had three studios, I had 17 people on the payroll, I had 700 public access producers who produced 3,500 shows. I personally believe public access is a First Amendment right, and I also believe it's an electronic soapbox, and that it's great to have it. I have been very upset since the state passed the law that took away the city's interaction with the customer on both PEG access and also on customer service issues. I think it was terrible. Now that AT&amp;T is in the business and Verizon, which is what it was all about, I am very upset that AT&amp;T has 4,000 customers in this city, and that one has a channel 35, the government channel, or channel 36. I think they're violating the law, and you better go after AT&amp;T on that one. But that's not the issue today. The issue today is public access. Okay. We know that the 1% fee that came out of the legislation in Sacramento is for capital only. So you can't have staff with it, which means how do you do it? So it kills it. Public access will end if we don't do something at our level here to keep it going, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What, in your minds, would be the best way at this point to preserve public access? What should we do?
Well, councilmen, there's a couple different recommendations that we would have. As part of the report recommendations from the Board of Information Technology Commission and Municipal Access Board, they proposed to reshape channel 36 from an education channel to an education community channel that would also air public access content. In addition, they would also provide an additional channel for distribution, which would be via the internet in a YouTube-type format. So in terms of distribution of content, that is one of the ways that the boards recommended jointly to council at a cost-neutral proposal of being able to include it. Since that report was published in June, ITA, at council's direction, has been continuing discussions with Time Warner to see if we can negotiate a lease-back agreement for a subset of the public access and educational facilities throughout Los Angeles. We are still in discussions, based on our preliminary discussions with Time Warner. They estimate that it would cost $250,000 per site for a lease-back arrangement for each location. So if we were to hypothetically lease back four locations in the city, that would be an additional expense of $1 million.
Please. Yes, thank you. If I might add that one of the main key points made in this report that's before you, and that ITA also supports, is that the city needs to preserve—the city council and the mayor need to preserve four PEG channels. That's the priority here, and we're—
Explain why we need to do that.
Currently, we have four PEG channels, public, educational, and governmental access channels in the city. Two are citywide, that's channel 35, the government channel that we're on right now. Channel 36, the educational, is citywide. And then the two that are operated locally in each of the former franchise areas in each of your council districts. Some may cross over, in fact, but those are two channels that we're entitled to. So there are four channels that we're claiming, and you've—the city council passed the DIFCO ordinance in December of 2006 to preserve those four channels, and that's the emphasis that we're bringing to this report.
The importance is, if we don't preserve them, what happens?
They go black, they go dark, they are gone, they go fellow.
And they return back to the providers.
So it's critical that we keep those four?
Yes.
What about interconnecting the third and the fourth one, so it's citywide?
That's our intention, and that's in the report.
Very good. Mr. Chair, I have a few questions to ask them real quickly.
We still have a minute 11 seconds. Go ahead.
Okay. How is the current PEG access system in the city funded? Do monies come from franchise fees to support PEG access in general?
Councilman, there's two sources of funding. The 5% fund—
Hold my time, please.
The 5% franchise fee fund, which was already in place prior to the state, the state franchise, and that is approximately $25 million. Of that amount, 60% goes to the general fund, which is approximately $15 million, and 40% goes for the operation of PEG. In addition, on top of that, as we discussed, the new 1% fund is approximately $5 million, and that is limited to capital expenditures only.
Why aren't these monies used for public access before?
Under the city's former franchises, the city obligated the cable operators, which is now Time Warner, the major operator, to provide support, all support, and staffing for the public channel, for the public access channel. So that's how the city—that's why the city did not have to support public access under the old franchising regime.
And if I could add to that, so as the franchisor, the city had the authority through its negotiations to put in place an in-kind service agreement where at no additional cost, as part of the franchise agreement, the providers were having to provide public and educational access facilities at no additional expense to the city or to the residents of Los Angeles.
Okay, let me ask you the real question at the moment, okay? 60% of the franchise fee is going to the general treasury.
That's correct.
It's not going to anything to do with the cable or anything else?
That's right.
Then there's 40% left. Is there money in that 40% if the city didn't sweep it into the general fund that could be used for public access?
Councilman, the answer to that question is yes. There is an additional money that is generally available and earmarked at the end of the year that reverts back to the general fund for paying for city services.
Okay. Now, I'm going to want to refer this to Budget Committee for further discussion at a point, but when the people want to know where's the money, how could they do it, and so on and so forth, is it true that the potential exists for something like $3 million that could be used for public access that gets swept?
Yes, councilman, that money is earmarked. There is approximately $3 million that is earmarked to revert back to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year, and that is built into the adopted budget that was adopted by the mayor and council.
Okay. So I just want to make it clear to folks, of that 40%, there is money in there that could go to public access that has also been swept into the general fund besides the 60%. So I really think budget needs to talk about that in the context that we want to, at our level, preserve public access with the money that we get from the franchise fee, which is a 5%. That's the end of my comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. And thank you for your history and your leadership on this. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker, then Mr. Weezer, and then Mr. Reyes. Ms. Hahn? Nope?
I don't know who pressed that.
Okay, that was accidental. Before that, I want to recognize Mr. Parks for a quick introduction, and then we'll hear from Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce Henry Early, professor of American culture at L.A. City College, and a group of his students are visiting with us today. Please stand. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and welcome to City Hall. It's great to have you guys here. And while we're waiting Mr. Weezer to come back, why don't we take Mr. Reyes, and then we'll hear from Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Council President. When we talk about public access, I start thinking of what—who makes up the public in Los Angeles? And I ask you, do you know how many languages we speak in Los Angeles?
I would ask the city clerk to perhaps answer that related to the election information they provide.
Probably over 100.
Yes. There's a lot.
Now, when we have public access programs, how many languages are we listening to?
Most of the public access is in English, but they have the opportunity to do them in another language. That's not a problem. That hasn't been an issue. Has not been an issue. That has not been a complaint to the city.
No, I'm not saying it's a complaint. I'm trying to understand, we're talking about public access, who has access?
The general public.
And so when we talk about public, we're talking about an international city.
Yes.
A city of many cultures, of many languages. So do we do our due diligence in ensuring that the accessibility is being promoted to the great diversity of the city?
Yes, we have actually audited the cable companies to ensure that they follow the mandate of the franchises, that public access be handled on a first-come, first-served basis. So if you show up with your programming, it must be accepted by the cable company for airing sometime down the line in their channel lineup—I'm sorry, their programming lineup.
So the issue's impacting this great city and how we discuss them is being made accessible depending on who has the resources to apply for access to this time that's very limited?
Yes.
And if I can clarify, councilman, in terms of resources, the services today at the public access facilities are provided at no charge. So it's just the time of the individual that's required to be able to produce content.
And how informed is the public about that opportunity?
Well, when we did our survey last year, we found that there was a robust community out there of regular participants, and the information that was being provided was, you know, was actually being circulated by the cable operators, and we've never had an issue with that. So there has been—not necessarily advertisement, but there has been outreach in the past.
You know, when I look at technology today, with all the advantages that are now there with our flattening of this world with amazing capacity in our youth, I just can't help but think, how do we augment that? How do we become more proactive? I know in my district, I come across community meetings where the folks who we need to speak to that fill the room are supposed to be spoken in their language, and folks who speak English are wearing headsets. That's just the reality of it. And so I'm hoping that as we go through this deliberation, this discussion, that we can hear more about how we create those opportunities. I think there's a certain circle of folks who understand this technology, this media. But you look at the makeup of our city and the challenges of the different folks who are struggling with jobs and childcare and all the good stuff we always talk about, how we make this a tool to improve quality of life is something that maybe we need to get a little bit more creative, given this diversity. Maybe I can see this report that you referred to?
Yes, yes.
And when was that done?
That was actually completed by the Board of Information Technology Commissioners and Municipal Access Policy Board on June 17th of this year.
Of this year?
Yes.
And was that circulated to the council?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we'll look for that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Very much, Mr. President. And excuse me if I ask some very basic questions again. I was out of the room, and I hope I don't repeat myself in some of the questions that were asked. But I assume it was expressed already that this is a horrible situation that we're in. I certainly appreciate the local programming that is provided through public access. I love watching the shows, I like being in the shows, because it's a way to communicate with local constituents. But I also like watching them, because you get to hear what's happening locally and in a format that is—if you want to use the word unfiltered—but—and that's very helpful to the local community to find out what's going on. But I want to clarify one thing first, is what's before us today is a recommendation to approve option one, which is in the report. And did you go through those already?
No, we did not discuss the options. We talked about it in general terms.
Talked about it in general terms. So you're recommending that we preserve a minimum of four PEG access channels, correct?
That's correct.
So you're not—it's—you're actually, by recommending it, and if we pass it, we will preserve four. It's not that we should look towards—we should try to find the funding for—it's actually there.
City council and mayor have the authority to do that, ITA does not.
And you would also recommend that the public or community access portion of the PEG access system, that we dedicate one government access channel, one government-related electronic bulletin board access channel, one community public access channel? Is that—is that it?
Yes, that's correct.
And assuming we do that, what's the practical impact on the number of shows we have right now, and the impact geographically in terms of how people will be able to provide local programming throughout the city? So two questions. In terms of the number of programs that are offered right now, and second, how would they be impacted throughout the city? Would it be different or not? Hold my time, please.
We were discussing the possibility of actually funding public access instead of doing the electronic billboard, and so if we can discuss that in a minute. If we just follow these straight recommendations, then to answer your question, public access will be impacted in the amount of programming time that will be aired over—
Please hold my time.
—that will be aired over channel 36 pursuant to this recommendation. There's no doubt. But also, as part of that, public access will also be given a web access provision in that—in this option, in that channel 36 will also air content through their website. Now, in terms of programming time, obviously, it's going to be impacted. The studios will close, and many of these public access producers, especially in your district—I know some of them personally—will not have the access to a studio, something that channel 36 does not have.
So the—they will have the available location and time to produce the show, but it's just—they would have to travel more, is that what it comes down to?
That's correct. They'd have to come downtown.
So they have to come downtown?
Yeah.
But we're not limiting the available times for them to put their show in the airway?
Well, actually, we would have to do that, because—
You would.
Because that channel would be sharing—
There would be much more limited time, right?
Education—that's correct. It'll be sharing educational content with public access content during the day and night.
So if we were to say, in terms of the available time right now for different programs, and how much time will now be available, what percentage are we cutting half? 75%?
That would probably be a fair amount, if not less. One-third, probably one-third.
One-third. So there will be one-third less available time for the public access—for the programs?
Two-thirds less.
Two-thirds less.
One-third would probably be going on, yes.
So there'll be two-thirds time less available?
That's right.
Which means that a lot of these programs who do want to be in the show will not be find sufficient time?
They will find sufficient time, but at a later time.
At a later time.
Because it'll have to be moved out.
Okay, and they would have to travel further and go to a different location to do that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Some discussions—I've had some discussions about possible funding to bring us up to a better level than is being proposed. Two questions. How much funding do you think would help us, and what would that get us?
Councilman—
A better option than this?
Based on discussions with Time Warner for a lease-back of the existing facilities, the cost of operations would be approximately $250,000 per facility.
How much?
So $250,000 per facility.
Per facility, okay.
So we were talking earlier, hypothetically, if you talked about having four studios remain, you would be looking at approximately $1 million that would be required.
And that was my first question, but we have that money available for the four studios?
Actually, that's a policy decision for the council and mayor. We had earlier discussion about the different sources of funding for the cable franchise revenues. There's a 5% fee that is already established, and as part of that money, there are monies at the end of the year that revert back to the general fund, approximately—this year, approximately $3 million. So it's really a policy decision for the decision-makers whether or not to—
But by adopting—by adopting this report today, we are funding the four centers, correct?
No.
We're not?
No, we—if you adopt this report, you allow the city to preserve the four channels to start with, and this is our overall goal in presenting this report to you.
The four channels, but not the four centers.
And, councilman— And Councilman Rosendahl, it's my understanding, is going to present a motion to refer this back to Budget and Finance to see what we could do about continuing at least four public access studios. Wrapped up in these options is that electronic billboard, just to preserve one of the channels that the government channel would run. We could take that channel and shift it over to a public access channel very easily. Doesn't have to be an electronic billboard channel. We're just doing it to preserve the channel so we don't lose it come January 1st, 2009, in less than a month. And so, if that motion is passed, I think we can explore that issue with the Council Committee and then bring it back here.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll return to our public comment now, give a chance, folks a chance to respond to some of the things they've heard. Our next speaker will be, we're going to do one minute per speaker. If there's no objection, I think we should hear from everybody as well. That would be about 15 minutes. I think we have 15 more cards. So, we'll start with Terry Scott, seeing no objection, or sorry, Terry Scott Mitchell. Did I say, did I read that right? And if not, then.
Yes, you said that correctly. Thank you so much.
Got you. And Peter Palmieri will follow.
Thank you. And good morning and greetings to the body. My, I'm a producer in three studios in Los Angeles, Baldwin Hills, Crenshaw Plaza, the one on Cowanga, and the one in Westchester. I produce a program that is dealing with health and healing. I've had many people to call me after seeing the show and not just complimenting me, but pursuing further the information that I was able to provide. And in some cases, people took my advice and took my suggestions, and they were actually healed in their process. I deal in the area of alternative medicine, organics, and microbiotics. And I just think that it would be a real shame to lose this ability, not just for myself, but for the other producers. So, my question to the body, if there is an answer to this, I have been told, and I don't have any quote documentation, that the reason why we're not doing this is because we don't want to retool the cable stations for HD.
Thank you. Well, Steve, we can get you an answer for that.
So, that's my question.
Thank you. Peter Palmieri is our next speaker. My apologies, I think you had been on deck before.
Oh, that's okay. Better late than never.
Yes, absolutely. And Cameron Datzinger will follow.
Hi, my name is Peter Palmieri, and I'm the host of Boxing Inside TV in the Cox System, that's Ninth Street and downward to the ocean. We've been on the air for 10 years. We just celebrated our 515th show on the air. We've had everybody from Delahoye to Pacquiao, Tyson yelling at me, all sorts of people, Don King, you name it. I'm here for you, before you today, to express my extreme displeasure over what's going on with public access. Should this bill pass, it doesn't matter what channel we're on, there'll be no studio. No studio, no public access, no ability to produce the shows. That would be taking the voice of public access, which has been a great bastion in Los Angeles, and slitting its throat. I don't think it should be done. Public access has been a very big cult, had a very big, excuse me, cultural and social and political impact in the community.
Thank you.
Max Kellerman, ESPN and HBO boxing columnist, got a start from public access. Jerry Brown revitalized his political career through public access.
Try to keep it as even as possible. One quick question for you. Who's going to win on Saturday? Who's going to win on Saturday?
Oh, I think Pacquiao's going to knock them out.
All right. Just wanted to make sure.
But anyway, what I'm saying.
I'm sorry, we have to keep the time as even as possible, so we appreciate your testimony very much. Cameron Datzinger is our next speaker, and then Ellen Frances Wharton.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
I have a show on public access where I interview various people in the community and various issues, and I did a show about Iraq, to give you an idea. And we had a guy that just came back from Iraq and was very meaningful because what it did was, it opened the community of what these guys are going through. So, my show really reached out to the arts of the North Valley, where Councilman Smith is our representative. And in that area, we have been able to get the arts, Shepherd of the Hills, Reverend Dudley on the show, other people in the community, to bring this harmonization of different people, different cultures, and to let the people know about all the different events in Los Angeles. And we've been on the air 10 years. We've had celebrities on, we've had, for the recent presidential election, we've had a debate. We had our highest rating for that, and people enjoy our show. And in fact, what I was going to say is, why we need it is because it brings the public opinions alive and brings music alive.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments today. Our next speaker is Ellen Frances Wharton. After that will be Felicia Brandon and Alison Gang.
When I first started producing Francine Dancer's variety show 12 years ago.
Can you get a little bit closer to the microphone? We'll see if we can get you a hand mic.
I would be allowed to for five years. It's been 12 years, and I'd like for it to continue. We volunteer our time and talents for free, and at least we shouldn't be denied that. And it's given me an opportunity to meet a lot of wonderful people, make movies like Public Access Hollywood, Access Nation, and now we're working on Access Denied. But hopefully, not forever, that, you know, I can't walk across the street in time, but through the magic of television and computers, I can dance all over the world. I've produced shows in English, Dutch, Spanish, Bohemian, and I just urge you to continue it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's in the contract, in the Constitution.
Great. Thank you so much. Felicia Brandon and Alison Gang will be our next speakers of the University of California at Los Angeles. Get a minute each, so, but you can't, but you can't cede your time, unfortunately, so. Go ahead, whichever order you want.
Hi, I'm Alison Gang with University of California Television. One of the channels in the proposal that you're reviewing is dedicated to an educational channel that would be University of California Television Programming, and we're working with UCLA to partner on that. UCTV is a 24-hour non-commercial channel that airs educational informational content for a general audience from all the different UC campuses. And we will be partnering and working with UCLA to create local content at no cost to the city and get the channel up and running 24 hours a day immediately. And Felicia will tell you a bit about UCLA's participation.
And UCLA's participation in that is to create an inclusive.
You don't have to speak so fast. We can give you a whole minute, don't worry. But we'll start the clock again.
I was trying.
Go ahead.
UCLA's component is, in that, is to be a convener of higher education institutions and create an inclusive channel that is of value for the city of Los Angeles, an educational channel of value for the city of Los Angeles. And to be honest with you, this has been in the works for quite a while, and the university is quite excited to have this finally come to fruition. And so, we certainly would appreciate you to, appreciate your yes vote in the, on this initiative, and thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you very much, both of you. Charlie Mount is our next speaker. After that is David Hernandez. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Charlie Mount. I'm the general manager for Classic Arts Showcase, which is a show seen on over 600 access channels across the country, including 35 and 36. In fact, we're on right after this show. The moment this meeting is done, our show goes on, so.
This meeting is adjourned.
That's right.
Go ahead, sorry.
As I understand it, the problem may be that there will be a loss of channel space, and some shows will have to go onto the internet. We've had the ability to go onto the internet ourselves for many years. We could put on a 24-hour stream now. But we don't because the internet doesn't work, and I think it will be the death of many public access shows. Our show is designed to be on television, be caught by people flipping through the channels, catching a little bit of our ballet and opera clips, and becoming inspired to go out into the community and purchase tickets to arts events. That's our mission. And there's a difference between channel flipping and web surfing. People are not going to find these programs on the internet. They need to have it on Channel 35 and 36 and the other access channels here in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing your show after this. David Hernandez is our next speaker, and then Danin Cienfuegos and Diana Fries.
Council members, a couple of years ago, on my public access show, I had the president of the Los Angeles Alliance for Elephants, and we covered the previous issue quite extensively. It is unfortunate that some of the council members who championed that effort didn't see the importance of preserving our First Amendment rights and public access to remain in chambers rather than go and rub elbows and take photographs with movie stars. But be that as it may, the reality is, this issue has been brought forth without a financial impact report, which is why many of the questions that are being presented today have not been answered. A community impact report has not been done. That's why many of the questions that have been asked today have not been answered. The AB, the bill that was passed in the legislature does not restrict the city council from protecting the public assets of the cities of Los Angeles. I have drafted a request to the city attorney to file an injunction against Time Warner from closing the studios and have forwarded a copy to the city attorney here, and I am requesting that the council enjoin with the city attorney's office in supporting that injunction until a policy and procedure can be formulated.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Because we have the.
Our next speaker is Danin Cienfuegos and Diana Fries. Is Danin Cienfuegos here? Oh, there you guys are. Come on forward. And then John Hall will be next.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Do we each get a minute?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'll start. Thank you for those of you who are actually putting their attention towards this matter and to people who came here to talk about it. One of the things that is, two things that are very important about it is the fact that we do, these are fees that we pay for, it's already been paid for, it's in our cable bill. Because we pay for it, it should be, it should go with what we already pay for. The second thing is, and we addressed that at the other city council meeting as well, the second thing is, being LA and we're in such a large community, we have an opportunity to be a great example of how to take something small, well, it's big, but it's small in the realm of being public access, using that money wisely. And using that money wisely, we can be an example to the rest of the counties in California as well as Los Angeles and make a difference in that regard.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Fries, and we are producers of a show called Two D's in L.A. And I'd like to comment a little bit on what Mr. Reyes said, actually, and that being about how we are such a diverse and cultural society here in Los Angeles. And therefore, that's why I believe that together, making up public access television is the only way that we can bring so many different cultures together to give them a platform to have that voice, to have, to have that voice to speak. And that's why I believe also that, you know, our show covers nonprofits and what nonprofit agencies do throughout California and mostly Los Angeles, because our show is based in Los Angeles. And I don't think that there's any program that I can think of right now where I can get the same information that I get off of public access on regular television, or cable television for that matter.
Or to provide that service, for that matter.
For the community.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. John Hall is our next speaker. After that is Carl Populous.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to thank a lot of people who came out here to support public access. And also, I'd like to congratulate a lot of people who's been involved with public access within the past at least about 10 to 15 years. And like myself, I've never been involved with public access, so I'd like to take advantage of public access. I'm a student, and I'm very interested in being a producer myself and also learning all the equipment that public access has to offer. And I think it's a good advantage for the community with, like myself, don't need to go out and probably have to intern, but just use my own creative idea and take advantage of public access. And I think public access is definitely something that needs to be used for the community to express. I think just like for myself as a student, there's also football games for high school students, and it also could be addressed for what's going on in the community. So, Mr. President, if you could please make sure that public access could be continued for a person or a student like myself who's in film and production and learned a lot of educational ways we have to get with the public access. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Populous is next, and then after that is Patricia K. D.
Yes, hi, Your President. I'd like for you to hold a minute so I could thank this council, especially that council person over there that's been in cable for 20 years for really laying out this format and really just stopping this meeting to actually point out what he did, because I felt like a lot would have been lost in the process had that not happened. And I just want to give a true testimony of this Time Warner. Time Warner took me in, let me produce some stuff. I was already doing stuff on the radio, so it really brought a face to life to people. And it's really, I think it's a connection in the community that a lot of people that's trying to eliminate this don't really understand. The first show I ever done, I was so nervous when I went in because I didn't have a title. I created a title right there, Inclusion Versus Illusion, talking about fathers and how they should get with their kids. And believe it or not, my son in Troy, Alabama, in college, saw that program. And I was thinking that, you know, I just hope I could touch somebody with this. So, I really don't think a lot of these people understand what an impact that have in the community, especially for the voiceless, some of the people that's been gang-banging forever. I even had a couple of people say, you know, I saw your show. Had I not saw that show, I was about to do something real stupid. And I think that we should really consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Populous. Appreciate your testimony today.
Populous.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Patricia K. D. is our next speaker. After that is Edward Ralph Cotton.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I merely wish to endorse words you've already heard. I hope when it's repeated, it doesn't get tiring because it's true. This has been pushed through. There's a lot of funds floating. I'm amazed, 15 million goes back to general funds. By the way, I've got a show with cable TV. I've had it since 1994, and I'm thrilled that the community comes together and people watch and hear this show. I get maybe some, on some shows, especially if I'm interviewing a good-looking man, I get as many as 600 calls for his telephone number. So, you get, we get a wide selection of people. I interview god gurus, legal people, artists, writers. This is such a talented town, and it's a great, a great privilege, as Mr. Rosendahl said, for us to have this community, this diverse community that Mr. Reyes doesn't understand. Here's from everybody. There's Parsi, there's English, there's Jewish, there's every language spoken on this thing, and it goes for free. There's a lot of missing money. I'd love to know what's happening.
Thank you very much, Cam.
There's no community impact report, no financial impact report. How confusing.
Thank you. Edward Ralph Cotton is our next speaker, and after that is Leslie Dutton.
Hi, thanks. Edward Cotton here. I think this is a really important issue that we have to keep this public access idea alive and well. Now, I got my share of challenges and all of that, but at least I know what I want to do in my old age. Why, you know, thanks to my friend Patricia here, I found out I'm a pretty good poet. Some people like my poetry. I've written screenplays, and people like my artwork. I also perform some music. I have a venue. Like I said, I know what I need to, what I want to do with my old age now, and as long as somebody like Roger Corman is still out there, I got a chance. But if they're going to consolidate this so that the only access you have is at UCLA campus, for instance, I got stopped by the police twice the last time I was at the UCLA campus, and I know I don't look that harmful or threatening. Perhaps Mr. Parks could tell you why they stopped me or why they look like I raided. But I want to have it accessible.
Thank you, sir.
To everybody across the board in my community.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate them. Leslie Dutton is our last speaker. Good to see you, Ms. Dutton. Welcome.
Hi. Los Angeles is the second-largest city in the nation, and for more than 20 years, there have been 14 franchise areas, cable franchise areas, that have each had a studio and a channel. I'm the producer and host of the Full Disclosure Network television show, and we've been on 40 cable systems across the state and even in other states. What is going to happen in Los Angeles, though, is that we are really talking about consolidating more than 14 channels into four channels. And when you give one whole channel to a higher education institution like the University of California, and you hold in place a government channel and Channel 36, which is all filled with all kinds of community programming, and then, of course, the 35 channel, there's going to be no place for the public to be heard. going to be no place for the public to be heard. That's just simply not the case. How you can rationalize giving one whole channel to UCLA or UC at this point is just, you just can't understand it.
Appreciate your comments. That's the last card that we had.
I turned in a card, so I don't understand.
Sorry. Why don't you give us your name, and if you'll fill out a card afterwards, please?
Okay, I will do that.
We need that for the record. Thank you.
I'm sorry. My name is Sally Hampton, and I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Caucus of Producers, Writers, and Directors. Yesterday, we had our steering committee meeting, and they voted to send me here to call on the city of Los Angeles to continue all the public access channels and, and to take steps to urge Time Warner to keep the public access facilities open and available until the city has worked out the plans for the replacement operations. Our members include the top 150 television producers, writers, and directors of daytime programming, and as the creative conscience of the television industry, we represent all four guilds. And the fate of public access is of grave concern to us because we believe it is a valuable tool for the creative artists and the public interest. Public access fosters diversity and local civic involvement by providing the public voice a platform needed to bring some balance to the voices of government and special interests. In short, public access is one of our finest examples of democracy.
Thank you.
And we urge you to keep it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. I'll close our.
She had to put her card.
Okay. What is your name, ma'am? We don't have a card for you, so if you could just tell us the name.
Okay. My name is Susan Block.
Okay.
And I am the producer of the Dr. Susan Block Show, which has been on public access in Los Angeles since 1992.
Thank you.
And I, I just want to be here to stand up for the importance of public access to producers like myself, as well as the public access viewers of LA. Public access is the people's television. You can see all these people from public access are the kind of people you might not see on regular network TV, on government-sponsored TV. This is because public access is open to people that are a little bit different, religious shows, cultural shows, even sexuality shows like mine. These shows are important for the public to be able to see. This is what democracy and freedom of speech is all about. And if we don't have these public access stations, our voices will be cut off, and people will not be able to hear this. They will only get government-sponsored and corporate-sponsored information and entertainment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That will, that will close our, our public comments. We already heard from you, sir, so we will now, I'll be closing our general public comments. Mr. Rosendahl is next on the queue.
Let Mr. Cardenas first.
Mr. Cardenas?
Okay. Um, I just want to thank the public access producers for being here today. This is a very serious moment in public access. The state took away in their legislation, public access as we know it, from continuing. The city of Los Angeles has an opportunity to save it. The 40% that went to ITA, if they used that 40%, there's roughly 3 million in there that would support the public access. And with negotiations with Time Warner for studio space, we would continue to have it. We need to have an interconnected, citywide, public access channel like we have the government and the educational access channel. So what I want my colleagues, who have not weighed in on the CAO sweeping that money out of that 40%, the council should have the authority to say, don't sweep it or sweep it. And if they say, don't sweep it, public access will survive. But it truly has to be the consensus, or at least eight votes, of my colleagues saying that they would like to see that 40% stay intact, of which a certain percentage, whatever is left, would be public access. So what I would like to make a motion, Mr. President, to refer the issue of funding from the technology development account for public access studios, and not just studios, but the whole programming of it, to the budget committee to take a hard look at that 40%. And if I could get a second for that motion, the, we have seconds over here, we have two of them, we have Mr. West and, and Ms. Design. Council members, this would give us the opportunity to say, do we want to take out of that 40% money for public access and let it continue, or we don't? I will obviously tell you my personal feeling. I think public access is a vital part of making the democracy work, and I'd like to see it continue. Thank you, Mr. President.
We have actually Mr. Design for the first time, and then Mr. Cardenas next on the queue after that. Mr. Design?
You weren't gonna go? Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge Full Disclosure, because that's what this is all about, Full Disclosure. And also, Time Warner, they've been very gracious in providing the access to me and my office, and I think this is critical to this community if we want people to learn and understand. Many people watch this council meeting on the television, on the internet. I'm amazed at how many people actually watch it. They stay up late at night and watch the replay because I don't think they can sleep, so they listen to us. But the programs that are aired on public access, I think, are a benefit to this community. And if it is pushed aside, someone made a comment, if the goodness of Time Warner, I don't know if there's goodness when it comes to the corporations, even though they've been helpful to us, and I want to acknowledge Time Warner for that, whether on the West Side and Culver City or the Valley operation, they've been very, very generous with us. But the bottom line is, if we can fund it through the city resources, since things are changing, we know that the digital television stage is about upon us shortly, we need to maintain it. So I would support my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, who spent many years in the cable industry, interviewed on his program when I was with the Protective League. But it's a vital service to the people of Los Angeles, and it's sad when a large corporation comes in and wipes it out. And that's exactly what we see happening, is they're trying to be pushed aside and wiped out. So I'll support that. I think we have the funding to make it happen. We may not have as many facilities as we have in the city at this time, but I think we'll be able to keep it operating and keep that quality that we have within it for the people of Los Angeles, because there's many, many people who enjoy that, and it is an opportunity for people that don't have access to the major networks or for the other cable operations that are in place in this region. So Leslie, I know you're here. Thank you for your project with Full Disclosure and for all the other folks that are here on this particular subject matter. Thank you for being here. You've got my support, along with Mr. Rosendahl on this motion. So I know we have a lot of priorities, but transparency and openness is very critical to our democracy. So thank you, and I support it.
Mr. Parks for the first time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to make sure that we clearly understand what that 3.8 million, that's money that was approved by the council during last year's budget process for the 08, 09 budget, which is now $60 million in the hole. And so if you are talking about removing almost $4 million and creating a 65 to $70 million deficit, that's what is being offered. It's not being swept at this point in time. It was a part of the entire budget deliberations that we agreed on that came effective July 1st of this year. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware. We'll go back and look at it in the count, in the committee, but this money is part of a deficit that currently exists.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
You sure? Okay.
Definitely.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Colleagues, what's before us, and I appreciate the, the motion that my colleague Rosendahl has made. We definitely should take a second look at things, seems to be the theme today, and try to sharpen our decisions. But what's before us right now is, I'd like to ask support to vote for option number one, as detailed in the June 16, 2008 Joint Board of Information Technology Commissioners and Municipal Access Policy Board Report regarding the city's future cable public educational and governmental access programs. And also, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank that body of individuals, that very dedicated body of individuals, as we call BITZI, for all of their wonderful support over the years and their dedication and their expertise. And they truly are an example of folks who are put on the proper commission, where they know what they're talking about, they love the issue, and they dedicated tremendous amount of support to the city and educated us policymakers and did a fine jobs for the community. So I'd like to thank them as well. So with that, members, unfortunately, we don't have a world going forward like we had in the past. The federal government and the state government has both tied our hands and put us upside down, but at this point in time, it appears that this is the best we can do. Hopefully, we can improve it in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl for the third time.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to ask ITA to be clear about this, what we're passing here right now. Could you come up for one quick second? Because frankly, Mr. Cardenas, I want to make sure that public access doesn't have a shared channel with Channel 36, but gets one of those four channels that are interconnected citywide, and we want it interconnected so that public access has a soft landing place within the mix of our channels. The report, does that allow that to happen or not?
Councilman, I'll outline again the four channels that are part of the option one proposal. The first channel is continuation of the current government access channel, Channel 35. A second channel would be a government access channel that should be adopted that would be initially an electronic billboard and may include additional government access programming over time. And this would allow the city to preserve the second channel at no cost to the city, and as the budget could be expanded, the channel could be reshaped in any way, including public access content. The third channel is for continuation of the current education access channel under Channel 36, under LACTAX authority. It would be designated as the community education channel. It would carry some public access content on its channel and deliver all public access content on the internet. And the fourth channel would be the higher education channel that would again be a no-cost proposal to the city that would be operated and managed by UCLA, UCTV. And it would be, as the representatives from UCT indicated, UCLA indicated, it would be one where they would convene content from higher education institutions across the city.
All right, but you don't really, you're saying the second channel is government bulletin board, and the government is authorized to have two channels, correct?
Actually, there is a grand total of four channels. Part of the option one does designate a second channel for government for the billboard.
But why not a separate channel for public access? So we preserve that channel.
If I may speak to that, if I may speak to that, essentially, what we have here in this option is the ability to have city council at the appropriate time when there's funding and we can negotiate with Time Warner, take that billboard channel we're talking about that will be operated by the government channel right now so that we can preserve it come January 1st, 2009. When we have the money, then we can switch that channel over to public access. We can, excuse me, we can.
Excuse me, folks, if we can.
We can switch that over.
Please let our comments end.
Now, with regard to what this option proposes, the current educational channel in the city that's interconnected, LACTAX, would carry public access until we can make that switch over.
Yeah, but I'm just suggesting, as a friendly amendment, could we not say then five channels? Just so there isn't the fear from public access that there might not be a channel for them?
We, we could not declare five channels because we didn't declare five channels in our Divco ordinance, and we were.
And you're what?
In our Divco ordinance, the city council passed an ordinance pursuant to state law, where we declared, the city council declared, and mayor declared, that we had four channels that we were entitled to under state law.
Well, one would have thought public, educational, government, that's public, meaning public access, would be three. And then maybe if you want to give one to UCLA, they have great product, that would be four. But you're not giving public access one of those channels.
When this report was done, the boards that did this report were, they looked at the budget that, that was in place with no monies available and with the goal of preserving four channels, they came forward with the, this not having a public access channel because we had no monies to have one to run the studios. They said, let's run an electronic billboard channel to preserve the channel. This is a city council issue, a policy issue.
Look, I, I can tell you, my colleagues, God bless us all around the horseshoe, but I'm a cable guy, and it never struck my brain in that kind of a way in any kind of a public discussion that we've had about it. Because I've always believed that you need a public access channel, period. My fear is, if you do the four like this, that generated billboard business about government, government wants a second channel, and it should have a check, second channel, but the public. And I, I know, I don't want to say UCLA get out of the picture, because I think they got good stuff, or USC, whatever they're doing higher education, that's a great channel. But that is actually the education channel. Public, educational, and government, remember? So you have eliminated, look, Dick Weirdon got rid of public access, he didn't like to smut on it, that was his play and all that other thing. But the law had a public access channel, a government access channel, it was called PEG. The word P means public. So somehow or another, I want to make sure we can preserve the public access channel. If you're willing to say, my colleagues are willing to say, that that second government channel will be now designated as a public access channel, I'll buy into it, but I'm afraid it won't. So we have to have a public access channel, or this is a joke. They're not going to be able to keep their product.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Now, have we had more than four channels here for these purposes?
No.
Did we have four before?
Yes.
Not five, not eight, not two, we had four, correct?
That's correct.
So we're preserving the number of channels that we've had in the past, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, if we don't utilize those channels, say, say we have four channels and one of them, for some reason, goes feral and for some reason, we don't utilize it, what happens to that channel?
It reverts back to the cable operator.
It reverts back to the cable operator.
They can use it for commercial purposes at that time.
Yes, and that means potential revenue for them, because they could use it for commercial purposes and, you know, put content on there, have commercials, and it'll be a money generator for them. So the reason why I'm going through this dialogue with you is because it's not that simple to dedicate one channel just to public access, because it does come back to both funding, and with that funding, you need actual bodies to, to pay for those bodies so that they can actually run that public access channel. And if you're gonna have a public access channel, and then you're gonna create it not only to air content, but actually create content, like have a studio, that costs money too because of the bodies we need to put in there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, in the four that we have rolling forward, which channel would very likely be the most likely if this council found the funding and then decided to make it a public access channel like Mr. Rosendahl just articulated? Which would be the most likely channel?
The electronic billboard channel.
The electronic billboard channel?
Yes.
So the fact that we have an electronic billboard channel, in my opinion, isn't the highest use for that channel when it comes to public information and public access. I believe that having a purely public access channel is a higher and best use for any one channel. Now, the fact of the matter is, if we were able to find the funding in the next two days or two months or whatever, as a, as the policymaking body of the city, we could convert that channel based on our direction of the council. And say we do it in January of 2009, for some reason, we figure out a way to go to the budget committee and do all this stuff, and then find the money to convert it back to a full public access channel, maybe even with a, a studio where people can create their content. That can be done, and we can convert it. Do we have to wait six months to convert it?
No.
It's just a matter of the physical nature of doing so, right? It's not like we have to wait nine months of public notice or six months. We can convert it effectively the following month if everything's in place and we have the money to do that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So the reason why I went through that dialogue is because I don't want people to walk away thinking that we're not gonna eventually do it, but the truth of the matter is, you heard from the budget chairman, and you heard from Mr. Rosendahl and from myself, there's certain things that need to put into place in order for us to do that. Fortunately, by adopting what we're doing today, we're preserving all four channels. We've never had more than four channels for these purposes. We're preserving all four channels so that if, as a policy body, we find the money and make the policy decision to convert it to a completely public access channel like people are used to today, then we can do that, and we will do that. And everything that we're doing today does not preclude that, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, fourth time?
Just for the last comment, I just want to make this clear. I would like to put that, Mr. Cardenas, in the form of a motion, so that it's on the record, that if we can survive with public access, I want that channel for public access. And that, that becomes the commitment from the city council to do that. Because my fear is this, you've given higher education a channel, okay? Okay. You also have the quote "community" channel, and you also have the government channel. You don't have a public access channel. And if we're saying clearly that this electronic billboard concept just preserve the channel, which we have to preserve, otherwise cable company takes it back and they make money,
or AT&amp;T, which is irresponsible right now and not even putting it on, you know, these folks, I know, I was in the cable business. You know, I had channel three on my lineup for public access. And then along came Adelphia and they sold it for a million bucks to somebody else and kicked me to seventy-seven for public, which was crazy. We know the value of these channels. So if I can have this as a motion, Mr. Gardines, that if we can put it together, that it will definitely be a public access, I'm thrilled.
Mr. Gardines?
I'd like to offer a clarification. I think Mr. Rosenthal, unless I misunderstood your first motion, your first motion has everything to do with that same issue.
Correct.
And the biggest stopgap in that is the funding. So what you might want to do is add what you just said to the motion you already made earlier.
So moved.
That's going to budget. Because that's unfortunately where the biggest discussion is going to have to be had.
Yeah, because you see, I totally will put that in there, but I also think Time Warner needs to be brought to the table and needs to be worked on because they can play a major role in assisting us in this whole issue as well. Great. I'd like to make that as an amendment to my amendment of the motion.
Okay. Accepted as a friendly amendment by everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I just have a technical question on this issue here. Because you're ITA, this is cable, correct?
Yes.
Just explain, how do we get on satellite? Just ask me that question because not everybody has cable.
In order to get on satellite, you have to come to an agreement with the satellite owners. Under federal law, they don't have to provide.
I got it, but the Board of Supervisors are on satellite and the Unified School District is on satellite. When are you going to be on satellite?
Those channels are must carries, local, over the airs. Channel thirty-five is a cable-based channel, is not an over-the-air must carry, that they're obligated to carry pursuant to federal law. So in order for the city government channel to be aired through satellite, it would have to convert to an over-the-air broadcasting channel.
Like the Board of Supervisors, maybe?
Yes.
So what we should do is ask the congressional delegation to do it. Okay, good. So we've got to do that. Avocca, I want that to happen.
Thank you. That is our last comment for the council. So as amended by Mr. Rosenthal, we have that before us. If we can please open the roll.
And excuse me, Mr. President, there is also a written motion for aid by Councilmember Weisar.
Okay, is there any objection to that? If not, that's accepted as a friendly motion as well on the Boyle Heights Technology Center. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, do you wish to take up items two, three, and eighteen?
Yes, we're going to continue those until January, I believe, twentieth, is that right? Let's hold those on the table. We're going to continue those, but. January sixth, without objection, we'll continue those three. Next items, please.
Next item is item number six, and that was called special by Councilmember Perry. And there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Okay. Councilwoman Perry on item number six.
Actually, I was, I was just holding, asking.
For Mr. Reyes?
Mr. Parks, but Mr. Reyes is here and he's going to take over.
Mr. Reyes.
Take over.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. Colleagues, this is a very important process that we are fine tuning and I want to thank the University of Southern California, USC, from the planning department, as well as the stewardship of councilmembers Parks and Perry in trying to define an environment that could stimulate a whole different quality of life for all the stakeholders in and around USC. What you have before you on six A are amendments that speak to a strategy, an implementation plan that achieves many different goals. This came to my committee back in October. It was held there because of discussions between the personnel from USC, as well as the planning department and the community. Several hearings were conducted and the council offices all worked together to get us to a place where I hope I can get your support. It is essentially an effort in which we want to make sure there is one community that we sustain and support, not only the objectives and plans of USC, but also to do it in such a way in which the local communities surrounding the campus are positively impacted. And so we have before you are several tools that can be used to achieve these goals. These are planning tools that embraces an inclusive process, allows for different communities to participate in the dialogue, and it fits within the various levels of planning tools that can be put into action. So that being said, I do know there's some folks who waited all day to get to this point, both at USC and the community. I thank you for your tenacity and patience and we can offer them one minute because we've had tons of public hearing for each speaker. It's something that we can move forward. Councilmember Parks, they're asking for two minutes, are you fine with that? We'll do the two minutes and we'll move forward with that. So that being said, there is one friendly amendment I'd like to offer. I spoke with Councilmember Parks and Perry on that item, and that is in paragraph eight of six A, in the middle of the paragraph, there's a phrase that says, "The findings of the Nexus Study can be utilized to mitigate potentially significant impacts of the new development occurring in the proposed University Park Campus specific plan." And we'd like to change the "can be" to "will be utilized" just to make sure we follow through with that consistency. So that being said, I'd like to offer up this time to Councilmember Parks, to Councilmember Perry, we can offer to the public, whatever, it would be a pleasure.
Speak.
We'll have the public speak, then we'll move from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the public cards. First, we have Nancy Halpern Ibrahim. And thank you all for your patience on the other items. After that will be Daniel Wu.
Councilman Garcetti, is Daniel Wu next? He has an exam. He has to rush.
Sure. Come on, we don't want you to miss the exam. Come on up, Dana. Go ahead, you can go first.
All right, thanks.
Make us proud, do well on the exam.
My name is Daniel Wu. Thank you again for letting me have this opportunity to speak with you, especially since I've been waiting for nearly four hours to talk for two minutes and I have finals. So thank you again, I really appreciate this opportunity. I'm a representative of Campus to Community United, a coalition over a dozen organizations on campus, university student government representatives, and with over four hundred students and professors agreeing to our statement of principles which include maintaining and promoting affordable housing, equitable economic development, and safety by working with the community rather than criminalizing the surrounding community. We're definitely a testament that students care about what happens in our neighborhood, especially on a long-term perspective, on the triple framework of equity, economy, and sustainability. I'm here because I'm concerned about the implications of the changes of the proposed specific plan boundaries, that public input will be significantly diminished, which is significant for the development process and making sure that it is equitable. Furthermore, language that includes the issue of the preservation of existing affordable housing and the prevention of displacement is absent. This is a really, really important factor in this motion. We, as students and students, we wish to further work with the community, the city, and the neighborhood groups to create a better neighborhood for all. On this note, we want the city to ensure that student housing is affordable to all student income levels. This is an essential issue for students and their parents, especially in an age of exponential tuition prices. But we cannot only be self-serving, we must live up to our name as a college with a conscience, as exemplified USC's and Princeton Review, and a community that according to Esperanza Housing Corporation spent seventy percent of their income on housing. This is tremendous. As we have seen in the past, despite the existence of our birth gate around USC, what happens on campus also affects the community. Why not work together at the same table to create a better future and a legacy that we can all be proud of? So thank you for your time and I really hope that the issue of housing, affordable housing displacement is strongly considered. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. And what's your examine? What's your examine, Mr. Wu?
Danny, what's your examine?
What's the examine?
It's on international relations.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I used to teach international relations at USC, so we'll talk at the sidebar. I'll give you an excuse, don't worry. All right, well, here next from Ms. Ibrahim. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Ibrahim. I'm the executive director of Esperanza Community Housing Corporation, and I'm here today with other members of Unidad who had to leave because of the time to express our shared concern over USC's profound impact on the surrounding community. Over the past several years, we have experienced the catastrophic conversion of affordable housing units for neighborhood families flipping to student housing. What happens on the USC campus, as Daniel has also mentioned, cannot be separated from the impact on the neighborhood. Unidad is a growing mobilization of community-based and faith-based organizations, community members, USC students, and faculty. Unidad is an acronym that stands for United Neighbors in Defense Against Displacement, and we were largely formed in the aftermath of USC's two thousand and seven master plan study and our dissatisfaction with it. We were very involved in turning community out for input, and that study was subsequently suppressed until we urged it to be brought forward. Particularly under present economic times, local low-income families struggle to pay rent and keep their families fed and healthy. The destabilization of rent in the neighborhood is having a disastrous effect on local families. Neither faculty nor students wish to be agents of displacement. We urge this council to use all of its powers to ensure USC conforms to an honest and transparent process of explicit planning and implementation. Development must not be permitted to be a furtive, private activity that deprives the surrounding community of its security and its voice. Further, we urge the city council to commit the planning department to include in its community plan an overlay zone that rigorously protects the preservation of affordable housing for families in the area and demands that all local development includes substantial and meaningful community benefits.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ibrahim.
Thank you. If I may, the Nexus Study, which we just had an opportunity to see in the amendment, should be conducted in an honest and transparent way, actively incorporating the community's input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Tafari Bane?
I'd like to leave, I'd like to write the comments.
All right, if you want to submit those, the sergeant-at-arms will make sure we put those in. David Robinson?
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. My name is David Robinson. I work for Sage and we are a member of the Unidad Coalition. We testified about an earlier version of this motion back in October at Plum, supporting the motion but urging council and the planning department to expand the specific plan boundaries to include the neighborhoods around USC that have been heavily impacted by USC's housing needs and policies over the past decade. As USC's planners themselves have acknowledged, the university has been indirectly but indisputably responsible for displacing thousands of local renters from their homes in the surrounding neighborhoods by choosing to house only a small fraction of its tens of thousands of students. The result of that choice has been a dramatic escalation in rents around the university with rampant harassment, eviction, and displacement of low-income families and rampant housing discrimination, which has gone largely unaddressed. Today's motion includes even narrower boundaries for the specific plan, which concerns us. We see, though, it also includes amendments that at least open the door to addressing the needs of the low-income communities if the details are carefully crafted and the process is inclusive. Given the lack of time, I'll only address one of those details that is extremely important to address. The amended motion mentions the possible construction of five thousand student beds. That housing must be priced to be affordable to low and moderate income students. If it isn't, those students who have sought housing in the surrounding residential neighborhoods will not move into the new housing. That's simple economics. It means the pricing of USC's new student housing is a public issue, not a private internal issue. So we are looking for a commitment that that be part of the specific plan for this narrowly bounded area now. The price of student housing is crucial. And let me just add, we do hope the future process will not just be asking community members to weigh in at the eleventh hour. All right? Thank you very much for your time.
Devin Corona is our next speaker. Devin?
Good afternoon. My name is Lily Marenko. I am a resident of that community, it's a Vermont-Jefferson, a couple of blocks from USC. I lived there for more than thirty years. Out of those thirty years, I've been dedicating a lot of time and money, my resources, to organize the community, to improve my community for a better quality life in there. We have brought supermarkets, closed liquor stores, even had a park in there. We had worked with the community members, public officials, even USC, to improve the quality of life in our community and to live there in a better community. Unfortunately, the last seven years, we started to see the displacement in our community. It was more aggressive the last four years, entire blocks move out illegally sometimes. Families that were waiting for that quality of life, they are not there anymore to enjoy it. We were working with USC and to have the relationship with the community. Unfortunately, they make decisions at the last minute when we cannot participate. We don't know how to act in that. They surprise us with new plans. At this moment, not only residents are struggling with the high rent, USC students too, they cannot afford the rent and it's so high in that area. Even closet, they have converted in order to rent it for five hundred dollars. That's really terrible. So what I ask this council is to please pay attention that people are struggling in this very hardship time. I am a business owner and a landlord too, and maybe I am the only one that rent very low in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Leeg is our next speaker. After that is Christina Raspe.
Good afternoon, city council. I'm Brian Leeg. I'm a program director at USC. And we've been working on this master plan for two-plus years. We've had over fifty community meetings. We've worked with a community advisory committee, which was formed up of members and stakeholders of the local community. And in this process, I think what we found out, and with this enterprise housing study, which we did sponsor and did release, is the university has become a residential college. That's a great thing for our university. It's a great academic environment when your students live next to their classroom, and we call it that live, learn, play model. But this residential college has, it has placed a burden on the community. Our students can very easily price out any resident, and they have done that, we acknowledge that. And it's the marketplace that has tried to cater, that has catered to our students who have bought up these buildings and have displaced residents. That's not the university, that's the marketplace responding to that demand. That's why this master plan, its key findings are to build student housing, to build student housing for our graduate students and our undergraduate students. We want to do that on university-owned property. We will displace nobody with that. We also want to build a quality community retail environment where our students and the community can interact. We are committed to an open process. The university has completed its portion, which is the master plan. Our trustees have acted upon that, and I think this is the next stage that we're looking forward to, which is the specific plan process. With that, I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christina Raspe. After that is David Galavies.
Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. Nobody does.
Try my best, thanks.
I'm Christina Raspe. I am the associate senior vice president for real estate and asset management for the University of Southern California. I'd like to thank Councilmember Reyes and Councilmember Parks for introducing this motion and for all the other council members for considering it. It is very important to the university. Several years ago, when we were entitling and then building the Galen Center, we heard from students and community members alike how there was a drastic shortage of student housing and how important it was for the university to respond to that need. Now, with the specific plan, we're trying to move forward to respond to the students and the community members. This project that we are proposing is one hundred percent on university-owned land. It can include up to five thousand new quality student beds, potentially two hundred and fifty faculty units, two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of neighborhood and community-serving retail, a hotel, a fifty thousand square foot conference center, five hundred thousand square feet of office space, and lots of publicly accessible, quality open space. In these tough economic times, the seven hundred million dollar construction project will provide much-needed housing, many construction and permanent jobs, potentially tax increment dollars, and quality retail and dining options in an area that has traditionally been underserved. We strongly believe in this project and the benefits it will provide both the community and the university, and we ask that you support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. David Galavies is next, and after that, we have Maggie Fanor.
Thank you. I'm the new director of local government relations for USC. As a former community organizer, this issue for me comes down to mutual respect and providing opportunities for the community. Over the last fifteen years, USC has done its best to respect and provide many opportunities which have included partnering with fourteen schools, NCDs one, eight, nine, fourteen, and other parts of the city to provide academic mentoring and family services to over fourteen thousand students in our communities. This includes everything from sports, after-school sports, cultural arts, dental care, healthcare, and even scholarships for students not only to attend USC, but also other universities in California and across the country. We've also partnered with LAPD and the community in enhancing safety by creating the KidWatch program, which has been replicated by the city of Los Angeles and is now known as KidWatch LA at many schools within the LUSD. Our Department of Public Safety also patrol the streets and work with the Los Angeles Police Department. Police Department. Our employees respect the community and want to provide opportunities so much that they willingly donate portions of their salary to the Good Neighbors Campaign, which is currently ongoing. This year alone, despite the tough economic times, USC employees have donated over $1 million to fund park improvements, domestic violence shelters, and other organizations within our community. The amendments before you continue this dialogue by advocating some type of development agreement, which could possibly include a local hiring agreement, green and lead building standards, a revolving loan fund for the creation of affordable housing, and many other things, including a Nexus study. So, in closing, I would like to thank Councilmember Parks, Perry Reyes, and their staffs, as well as the City Planning, CRA, and the community folks here today for their work on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie, is it Fager?
My name is Maggie Fager.
Fager. I wasn't even close, but after that's Arnold Sacks. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am a resident of the area. I serve on the Design Review Board, and I am Chair of the Plan Check NC, which is the Oversight Committee and liaison between the Neighborhood Councils and the Planning Department. I'd like to thank Councilmember Parks and POM, first of all, for getting this issue and this motion here today. It is an important step that this motion takes in opening up the process and recognizing the potential impacts of projects that extend beyond the project boundaries. It is recognizing that this project is important to the community at large, not just simply within the very tightly defined boundaries. I'd also, however, like to request vigilance on the Nexus study. This must be an open and a real study, not just a token study that gets shelved. In addition to recognizing the importance of the USC-specific plan, be congruent with the community plan, not the other way around. I am concerned that the project design features, mitigation measures, bonuses, and incentives be coordinated and designed to ensure that community quality of life is enhanced and maintained, and that potential secondary impacts on the quality of life are addressed as a result of these measures. Thank you for your time, and good morning.
Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, and then General Jeff will be our last speaker.
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. This is a smoke-and-mirrors deal, if there ever was one. The people that have come and spoke regarding this plan should pay attention with the state legislation that's going on. State Bill 375, which calls for a regional transit reduction in greenhouse gases initiative, and the initiative is to be used by developing transit-oriented housing. And SCAG, which is the Southern California Area Governance, put on a hearing, a seminar last month, and they used the Expo line and the Vermont Avenue Expo line station as an example of combining transit and housing in one area. This is really about getting the MTA to use the new funding that has been developed from the half-cent sales tax, so they'll be allowed to buy property so they can develop these transit-oriented plans. Instead of using the private sector to develop the property, the MTA will use public funds that should go into transit-oriented projects, not transit-oriented housing, but transit projects themselves. They will buy property, and that way, they will pocket the funding. This is an item that's been put forth by a member of the MTA Board and a member of the Foothill Transit Authority. It smells of politics. Be very careful. And the people that are from USC, pay attention to 375, the state legislation. It's about reducing vehicle travel miles, and that's what this is about. Shady funding somewhere.
General Jeff is our last speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is General Jeff. I'm a community activist for the Skid Row neighborhood. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, and I'm also on the Planning Committee for the Neighborhood Council. I was born and raised in South Central Los Angeles, and we finally refer to USC as the University of South Central. I absolutely love USC, and I understand exactly their intentions. They need to expand and what they need to. That being said, I think that there's a major concern for the low-income families in the surrounding areas and any type of threats or any type of issues addressed to them being displaced. They really need to be looked at, and I believe that USC would really be willing, and I hope that USC will be willing, to be involved with the relocation aspects of this project, and hopefully, they will be part of the solution. Thank you. And also, Mr. President, I'm going with Deila Hoya.
All right. That's who I'm rooting for. Our speakers list from the public is now passed. I'd like to call on Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to also thank the USC Ms. Raspe and all of those that have been a part of this, and also with Jan Perry, that we share that eastern boundary with. One of the things I think is important as we look at this motion and we also look at the amendments, is that we have to realize that in this area, and this is just those I can think off the top of my head, in the last couple of years, we've had EIRs dealing with the Expo line, the Galen Center, the Coliseum, University Gateway, and also Mount St. Mary's. We've also created a student overlay zone to deal with the issues that the community talked about of displacement of student housing, which is now in place. Myself and Ms. Perry went together and created density bonuses on Figueroa to take advantage of the transportation corridor of Figueroa. Also, probably the highest concentration of preservationists reside within Mr. Reyes's area north of Adams Boulevard, which certainly have their input in a variety of issues. As a member of Expo Line, Ms. Perry and I ensured that the line movement to Flower accommodated the Galen Center as a stop, and also insisted on a stop at the Truesdale Crossing at Expo to ensure that there was more than adequate access to the new rail system, and then also, which should accommodate to some degree some of the parking issues in the community. And also, recently, the council approved a 10-year cycle of approving community plans throughout the city, of which both the south and southeast community plans are in process for this area. I am pleased in working with Ms. Raspe that SC has narrowed their focus to the new attachment A that's attached to this amended motion and address the area of Section 1, 1A, and also 3, which is primarily the property that they own specifically. And it gives them an opportunity to develop upon their own footprint with their own funds. They're not asking in developing this specific plan for funds from the city, but they're willing to pay the ongoing rate in order to get this accomplished. I think when we look at what the particulars are in the project, when we can look at the needs of the community in which they're talking about, including construction of possibly 5,000 student beds, 150 hotel rooms with a conference center, and 250,000 square foot of retail, what they're really creating is a walking campus within that surrounding areas that will reduce the need for driving and also for vehicles. And I agree with Mr. Reyes on Item 8 on this amendment, that rather than the Nexus study can be utilized, that we should say it will be utilized for significant issues and impacts, so that we make sure that if we're going to do the study, that it's going to provide the service to the community. What's also important in this amended motion is that we need to expand the project area, the expiration date from 2011, so that we, as a city, will begin to get the benefits from the Expo University Park project area for capturing funds to create the low- and moderate-income housing tax increments, and also, as well as a CRA general tax increments, to provide the very things that are talked about for that housing in the larger community plan area. And so, these are things, I think, accommodate many of the needs that the community spoke about, but also addresses many of the things that have already been accomplished. And I think the fact that we, as a council, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry, and myself, share the boundaries around this, that it fits into where we feel comfortable, that it will accommodate the needs in the future of the community. So, we are pleased. I think we asked SC a while back about having this plan. They've worked on it. We think that in moving forward, the narrowness of the plan is a benefit. The expansion of the community plans to a broader base would be a benefit for the larger community, and we should not merge them or find a way to address the more general problems in the community within the specific plan of USC. We also are in the process of creating a specific plan for the Coliseum Expo Park area that will also give some additional benefits to the community and such. So, I think we've tried to measure the concerns. We've tried to be aware of the community issues, the needs of the students, the need of low-cost housing. But we think that in creating the tax revenue is the greatest benefit of creating the low-cost housing that people are looking for.
Mr. Reyes.
Yep. Thank you, Councilman. I just wanted to rise and thank all the stakeholders who have been here, and I want to name them because we've been through so many different meetings. We've worked with different committee groups. Nancy Ibrahim from Unidad and Norwood School Elementary. We had a meeting one night over at the school, and USC personnel showed up. We had that dialogue. We talked about these strategies. I was invited to another meeting off of Vermont and 23rd Street, and we had these discussions. We engaged some of the very same families that were already displaced, and it is a very emotional, very trying time for many of the residents of this area. But I got to say that, working with USC's personnel, they've been very responsive. Christina Raspe, Associate Senior Vice President, Brian Lee, the Program Director, Kurt Williams, the Vice President, John Souffre, University Architect, and David Galavies, the Director of Local Government Relations, along with Patricia Diefendorfer from the City Planning Department, and Faisal Robles, Senior City Planner, are all working to create these tools. And just to break it down, the property that USC owns will have their specific plan, and they will move in a direction that's going to be inclusive. They will have community participation. There will be hearings. A community plan is a larger overlay that's going to be surrounding the property, that's going to affect three different council districts. And that's where the eloquence of Councilmember Parks, his relationship with the rail line, and how we look at corridors to stimulate housing, how we start discussing the notion of creating housing opportunities along these corridors, how do we start negotiating how we prevent displacement of current families, which is also part of this dialogue, this process. And that's where I know I'll be very much involved as Nexus study. Our personnel will be working with USC and all the stakeholders in good faith, as it has been demonstrated already in the past. Sometimes we don't like how much time we have for notices. Sometimes we get caught up in our different cycles of our pressures and our daily routines, but we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that all the stakeholders are informed. I urge and I vote, and thank you for your patience. And it's unfortunate when we are talking about displacement and housing, that it is in an empty room, and I'll just stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will take what is before us up. No other speakers in the council. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is Item Number 15, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Okay. Item Number 15 is next before us. We have a card from the public. Arnold Sacks, would you like to come forward? We could ask folks just to clear out the aisleway for our public speaker, please. I guess the Sergeant Assistant, thank you. We have a public speaker at the podium. If folks can just clear out, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Item 15. The items on this agenda include boundaries. These are motions for maintenance of lighting districts. You have Colfax Avenue and Chandler Boulevard, which was Item Number 10. You have Item Number 11, El Centro Avenue and Santa Monica Boulevard Lighting District. You have Item Number 12, Hubbard and Fenton Avenue's Number One Lighting District. You have Item Number 13, Figueroa and 77th Street Lighting District. You have Item Number 14, Main Street Between 88th Place and 90th Street Lighting District. And then, Item Number 15, Sherborne and Witworth Drives Lighting District. The reason I bring these all up, and again, I've come before the council board, is because I'm interested in finding out what the boundaries are for the Mid-City Exposition Light Rail Transit Project Segment A2 Lighting District.
Sir, have you been able to go online or talk to the city clerk and get that information? Is that...
No, I haven't.
Okay. All right. We'll see if we can get that for you.
I'd just like to point out that...
Do you have internet access, sir, if we're able to give you the report on that?
No.
Okay. Well, we'll see if we can get that in a written form.
I'm still just looking for the mid-city boundaries for the exposition line.
I understand that. I understand. We'll see if we can get that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will close our moments on that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 19, called Special Four Cards.
Okay. Item 19 is next before us. Arnold Sacks, would you like to come forward on Item 19, please?
Just very quickly, yes, I know that the Budget and Finance Committee yesterday, I mean, on Monday, considered the triathlon, and I'd just like to point out that since you are against having marathons on Sunday now because of the changed date, because of religious purposes, it would seem to me that you can't have a marathon on Saturday also because those are violating religious tenants also. So, just exactly what date would you plan on having the triathlon? And if a race, like, there's a race going to be held this weekend, a half-marathon, if the race is not exactly a marathon, does that violate the city council's new regulations regarding the running of marathons on Sunday? And finally, a quick aside, Mr. President, has the council decided on Friday's meeting, will there be one held in Van Nuys? Can it be made available to the public?
That is still scheduled, yes.
Excuse me?
It is still scheduled right now, yes.
It's still scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close our comments for this item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, January 27th, to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
He's excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. We will now go into closed session, according to California state law, and with that, we will clear the room for our confidential discussions. If there's any vote that requires open session, we will go ahead and do that. Thank you. Thank you.
Not that you're dishonest.
Welcome back to open session. We have some settlements before, so if we can go through those. Madam Clerk?
First item is item number 23, and that settlement in the case of Morelli et al. versus City et al., and the settlement total is $3,886,250.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. City Attorney.
And for the record, on this settlement and on items 25, 26, 28, and 29, in closed session, the vote was 12 to 0, with council members Reyes, Weiss, and Han absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item 25, and that settlement in the case of Pablo Vitar versus City of L.A. That's a death benefit case, and the settlement amount is $160,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next one?
Next item is 26, and that's Samuel Williams versus City of L.A., also workers' comp case death benefit, and the settlement amount is $250,000, death benefits plus $5,000 for burial expenses.
Thank you. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 29 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 28 is also workers' comp, and the settlement amount is, excuse me, the case name is Witter versus City of L.A., and the amount is $140,570, plus a life pension payable thereafter at $42.52 a week.
Okay. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 29 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 30 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 31 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 32 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 33 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 34 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 35 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 36 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 37 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 38 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 39 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 40 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 41 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 42 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 43 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 44 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 45 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 46 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 47 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 48 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 49 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 50 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 51 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 52 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 53 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 54 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 55 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 56 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 57 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 58 is also workers' comp, and the settlement amount is, excuse me, the case name is Widder versus City of L.A., and the amount is $140,570, plus a life pension payable thereafter at $42.52 a week.
Okay. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 59 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 60 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 61 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 62 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 63 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 64 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 65 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 66 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 67 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 68 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next one?
Next item is 26, and that's Samuel Williams versus City of L.A., also workers' comp case death benefit, and the settlement amount is $250,000, death benefits plus $5,000 for burial expenses.
Thank you. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is authorized as well. Next item?
Item number 27, Capon versus City of L.A., and the settlement amount is $700,000.
Okay. Please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 28 is also workers' comp, and the settlement amount is, excuse me, the case name is Widder versus City of L.A., and the amount is $140,570, plus a life pension payable thereafter at $42.52 a week.
Okay. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 29 is settlement, Boo Wee versus City of L.A. That's also workers' comp death benefits, and the settlement is $125,000.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
And that clears the desk.
All right. Colleagues, are there any business announcements?
Arts, Parks, Health and Aging will meet at 15 after 2. We'll be detained 15 minutes.
All right. Mr. Weiser?
Audits and Governmental Efficiency will meet at 2:15.
Okay. The committee meetings will be beginning at 2:15. Do we have any adjourning motions today?
Yep.
If I can ask everybody to please rise for our adjourning motions. Mr. Smith? If I can ask you to please rise. Mr. Alaco?
Council members, I'm asking that we adjourn in the memory of Ron Montenegro. Ron Montenegro is the son of Mike and Dolores Montenegro. Mike grew up in North Hollywood with my dad in a little vario called Orcasitas. Orcas is, was an Italian farm owner. He owned half the San Fernando Valley at some point. Anyway, the varios in the San Fernando Valley developed from, from the ranchers who, or the workers who lived, who worked at Orcas Farms. In any case, Ron passed away at the age of 66. He worked for the Department of Water and Power as a water utility supervisor and at the East Valley Yard in North Hollywood, and retired after 34 years. His father also worked at DWP, and his brother Mike, who grew up with me and was one of my best friends in high school, also works for DWP. Ron married Sally Hidalgo, went to Poly High School in Sun Valley, and graduated in 1960. They, he and Sally celebrated 46 years of marriage this past June. They had four sons, little Ronnie, who actually passed away at the age of four, Steve, Gary, and Ray. Ron owned a barber shop in North Hollywood, but he sold it to work for the Department of Water and Power. His, he most enjoyed going to the horse races in Las Vegas. In fact, I think I bumped into him in a gambling institution not too long ago, believe it or not. He will be missed by his family and friends, and we wish, we express our condolences to all of them. Memorial services, the rosary will be held on Friday, December 5th at 7:00 p.m. at San Fernando Mission Mortuary. The funeral mass will be Saturday, December 6th at San Fernando Mission. He is survived by his wife Sally, his sons Steve, Gary, and Ray, and his grandchildren Gary Jr. and Brianna.
Thank you. We have Mr. Labanj next.
Members, I just asked, we all stand and think of the people of Mumbai. On Sunday, we gathered at the Hollywood City Hall, our 25 sister cities. Mumbai is a sister city of ours. We all realize a terrible, terrible act of terrorism that affected the people of Mumbai, the people of India, the attack on the Jewish institutions that were there. So that we ask that we adjourn in memory of all those victims of the Mumbai incident, and that we forward the proper documents of the Consul General of India to that, and also forward to our sister city of Mumbai. And I ask that all members join, but ask as the mayor has joined us well in that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labanj. Appreciate that, and appreciate your words for that city, which touched all of us. Mr. Parks?
President, I have a belated adjourning motion, asking to adjourn in memory of John Francis Harrington, who resided in Pacific Palisades, passed away on October 26th at the age of 84. He was a beloved figure in the Pacific Palisades area, where he and his late wife Celeste were best known for their family business at the Harrington Camera Corner, which served the Palisades residents for nearly 50 years. He was an avid photographer, and also was best known for his 1998 publication, Seaports of the South, which was a coffee table book capturing maritime activity in Southern United States. He's a proud World War II veteran, and had, was involved with eight combat missions during that war, also an avid golfer, served, his services were Saturday, November 1st, at Corpus Christi Catholic Church in Turnman at Holy Cross Cemetery in Culver City, and he's survived by a host of relatives.
Thank you. We'll put Mr. Rosendahl on as the second. Are there adjourning motions today? Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, Mr. President. Members, Michael Walters, a senior environmental engineer and district engineer of the West Los Angeles District Office of the Bureau of Engineering, passed away after a brief illness on Friday, November 28th, at the age of 52. Mike began his city career in September of 1991 as a civil engineering assistant, number one, with the Bureau of Engineering. He was promoted to civil engineer assistant two on September 16th, 1992, and moved to civil engineering assistant number three in 1998. He went on to become a civil engineer in 2001, and senior environmental engineer in 2006. As a civil engineer, Mike served as liaison to the city council for Bureau of Engineering, gaining the confidence of council members as well as the city engineer and staff in coordinating the work of the Bureau with the city's political leaders. Mike was committed to creating an environment in which his staff would succeed, and consistently encouraged and participated in the preparation of a staff's career growth opportunities. Among his many outside interests, Mike enjoyed home improvement projects, vacationing, traveling with his family, sailing, and driving his Mini Cooper. He will be deeply missed by the Bureau of Engineering, by his colleagues as well as his staff, who respected and admired him, and to whom he provided outstanding leadership as a district engineer. Mike is survived by his wife Ruth and his loving son Tim. I'd like all members on that.
Sure. We'll put all members on it. Mrs. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ronald I. Cohen passed away Saturday, November 29th. Ronald Ron Cohen was born Brooklyn, New York, to parents Ida and Abraham Cohen, moved to California about 30 years ago, a loving, loyal, and supportive husband to his lovely wife Randy, two wonderful and talented sons, Daniel and Adam. Was so proud of his children and loved to watch them play in their sporting games. Ron was a sports fanatic. He loved all sports, especially tennis. Even though Ron had lived in Calabasas for the better part of 30 years, he was a true New Yorker fan, member, a number one Mets fan. He followed the Rangers, Knicks, and Jets as well. An active and involved member of the community and of Temple Aliyah.